At a 4:30, we will call the CCEC meeting to order on August 28th, Friday. Can I have staff mute themselves and presenters? And then Kwesi, can you call the role?
Will do. Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Carter is present. Alder Abbas?
Present.
Alder Abbas is present. Alder Harrington McKinney?
I'm present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Skidmore?
Here.
Alder Skidmore is present. Alder Hennick? Alder Tierney?
Here.
Alder Tierney is present. Alder Campbell?
You're muted, Rebecca.
Here.
Alder Campbell is present. Alder Bedar?
Not here yet.
Okay, we do have quorum.
Thank you. I will now ask the technical facilitator to read the meeting instructions.
Welcome to our virtual meeting. We're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff, members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. The chair, clerk, and tech facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting committee members. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. The chair will do their best to call in committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda.
Thank you. And Joe, can you send Alder Bedar the link? Or Kwesi, someone?
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
Karen Kapusta-Pofol, the legislative analyst wants, needs one as well. Joe, if you don't mind?
Okay, anybody else? Kwesi?
That is it for now.
Okay, great. So let's go into what's the pleasure of the body? We do have a presenter for tonight, and we also have public comments. Do you want to do public comments first and then the presenter? Okay. Can I get them?
President, we do have, we have one registering for public comments. Hold on one second, I'll pull it up. Cassidy Slinger in support but does not want to speak. The rest of those wanting to speak are for item four. So I guess we can get to them when we get to item four. And then, yeah, you can decide if you want the presenters to present before or after, prior to discussion.
Okay. That is fine, thank you. Do we have any disclosures or recusals? Okay. Before we get to item four, let's go ahead and have the presenters. Kwesi, would you like to introduce them? You're muted, too.
So we do have Brian Core and what's Ms. Perez? I can't, oh, there she is. And Ms. Leana Perez, both from NACOL, that's the National Association for the Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. They've been working on civilian oversight across the country and welcome, and we'd love to hear from you.
Hey, well, thank you so much. First of all, it's an honor and privilege to be able to speak with you today. We're mostly here as resources, so we'll present relatively briefly and then hopefully address any questions that we can. And so again, as you just heard, my name is Brian Core. And while we can do quick introductions, then I'll say a little bit and hand it off to Leana. So to introduce myself, I live and work in the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts, originally from Detroit, grew up in the Midwest, went to school in Ann Arbor. And most of my work career, starting in the eighties, was around issues of peace and social justice. I ended up working as the first statewide field organizer for the ASOU of Massachusetts. And then after that, I started working for the city of Cambridge about 12 years ago. And then two years into that, they asked me to take on the civilian oversight work. So I've been doing that here in Cambridge since September 2010. And in that same month, got involved in NACOL, which we'll tell you a little bit more about. So I am currently serving on the board as immediate past president. So in about a year, I will finish up, I think, nine years on the board. So I'm very passionate about this work, very glad to be part of supporting the city of Madison as you're doing this work. So Leana, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the invitation. My name's Leana Perez. I'm talking to you from Tucson, Arizona today. That's where I live, 109 degrees right now, so it's pretty hot down here. I was the police auditor for the city of Tucson from 1997 to 2014, when I retired. And when I retired, I went to go do some work for NACOL because I've been a member of NACOL since 1997. And it's grown by leaps and bounds in that period. And I knew that there was a real need for those of us that had been working in the profession to kind of give back and help other communities with training and education and providing resources as they go through the process of creating oversight in their communities. And I will say that you're probably not at any different point than many of the communities across the country that I talk to every single day with respect to, you know, questions and resources. And we're here to help and to offer information. We don't create the oversight agencies, but we like to think that we have a vast amount of resources and experiences with, you know, communities that we work with on a daily basis. Turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Leana. So let's see, I want to say just a little bit on the beginning about kind of how I think about this work in a way that hopefully is helpful, you know, very briefly. And then I'll ask Leana to go into some more details about recommendations for effective practices and effective oversight that NACOL has put together. But overall, quickly, I would say, one thing that really animates the work I do is looking at procedural justice and legitimacy. And that is, that was one of the pillars of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. It's very important for police departments to work with people in a way that's procedurally just and that therefore creates legitimacy. I also always emphasize that it's equally true for oversight. And in some ways, it might actually be a little bit easier for the police to do that because a civilian oversight agency has multiple stakeholders, all of which we have to maintain legitimacy with. That's the general public, community organizations and activists, people who are making complaints, of course, the law enforcement agency as an entity, the leadership and the officers, and the elected officials and appointed officials in government. All of those are stakeholders for oversight. So it's a complicated but very interesting, endlessly fascinating work that we do. The other two points I'll make quickly are, one of the things that we've really focused on in our work is looking at not just backend accountability. So not only looking at what went wrong, what happened, how do we hold people accountable for that and do our best to make sure those people can't do it again, but also frontend accountability. How do we look at policies and procedures, training in particular, more even than policies and procedures, in creating situations that lead to misconduct or even things that may be fine according to the current policy and procedures, but are not acceptable to the community? And that's a very important part of where oversight has gone in general. But you always have to be doing the backend accountability as well. But the more you can do on the front end, the better things are for everybody, not just because you get less complaints, but because you're really meeting the needs of the community. And then the last thing I'll say is my personal passion is really around looking at the role of trauma in all of this work. Trauma as it affects communities, historical trauma, personal trauma, individual trauma, trauma of people who've had negative encounters, all the way up to police brutality and death at the hands of police and their family members, and also the trauma that law enforcement and first responders undergo. The traumatic nature of just being a police officer, the things they see, the things that they're asked to do, and the up and down nature of their work. And unfortunately, the long history in law enforcement of not addressing trauma, which is finally starting to change. That was also in the President's Task Force report on 21st Century Policing. So I will stop with that in terms of the big picture. The last thing I'll say, because we'll say it over and over again, but I want to emphasize it, no two civilian oversight entities look the same, work the same, function in the same way because state laws, historical conditions, political conditions vary. And ultimately, every oversight agency has to be designed and then continually worked with to ensure it's the best fit. People will often ask us, what's the best form of oversight or the strongest form of oversight? And we believe that there's not a best way of doing anything that applies across this entire nation, but there can be a best fit for your community. So with that, I will stop with the big picture and turn it over to Leana for her comments.
Right. And as Brian says, what we're recommending really right now when we're talking to communities and, you know, some of the training that we do with communities across the country is not so much, you know, best practices, but effective practices. And we recently completed a project, a two-year, well, multi-years, going on three or four years now, project, we got a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice to actually study nine different, do case studies across the country. We did nine different oversight agencies with different models and really looked at kind of the pros, the pros and cons of each model, what would make them more effective, you know, what their budgets, were they appropriately resourced? We're about to release that report probably in the next couple of weeks. It's in for final editing, but some of the information that we gleaned from there, and I know Brian has shared some of this with many of you with respect to some pre-publication of that report, but some of the basic tenants of, you know, of when you're creating a model as far as, you know, what language you're putting into your ordinance. And I would say that yours is very comprehensive. I mean, just from what I've, just the last couple of days that I've just had a chance to go over it. But some of the basic areas that we are always recommending is that, you know, that the model or who's ever going to be doing the work, regardless of the model, that independence is very important, accountability, and not just that you write in things into an ordinance that gives the auditor or the monitor or whatever the title you're going to give this oversight entity the ability to hold a lot, not only hold a law enforcement agency accountable at many different levels, but also to hold themselves accountable. And when I say to hold themselves accountable, the oversight entities are usually created to be accountable to the community because they're also serving the community. So to the extent that you can, you know, incorporate that language into your model is very helpful because the expectation of the community is, you know, frequent reporting, you know, either annual reporting, semi-annual reporting, or even reporting as incidents, as high-profile incidents happen. I've gotten many, many calls in the last couple of weeks from communities that, you know, are looking to create oversight. And I'm like, you've had oversight, you've had oversight for 25 years. And, you know, they're like, we don't even know they exist. So your oversight entity needs to also be accountable to the community and be that visible presence in the community. And along with that goes transparency. There's going to be that ability to be transparent with the community as far as the work, you know, even if it's, you know, in different states, you know, you may be a little bit impeded with respect to what you can and can't report on with respect to, you know, officer's personnel history or, you know, the type of discipline. But to the extent that you can be transparent is very, it's very important in building that credibility with the community and building that level of trust that your oversight entity as created is going to serve and, like I said, be accountable and transparent with the community. And, you know, and I'm not going to go over all the different, you know, recommendations that we made in that report, but one of the other ones is also a properly resourced oversight entity. Because the biggest, the quickest way to kill an oversight agency is not giving it the proper resources for it to become, be sustainable. And that's not, you know, it's obviously budgetary, you know, challenges that some of these oversight entities face sometimes. But also, you know, the staffing and Brian mentioned as far as looking at bigger picture and being able to make recommendations for policies and changes. What we've seen over the last, I would say, 10 years is that the role that oversight now is playing is not just looking at individual complaints, but looking at systemic issues in the law enforcement agency that the oversight entity, you know, be it the auditor, the monitor, or the board, that they have the ability to make recommendations for different types of training or for putting in things that will create an accountability system when you're making recommendations, say, for, you know, either training or a different change of a policy or a reporting requirement. And when you're making those recommendations to, there has to be a channel as to who you're making those recommendations to as the oversight entity and where is the accountability or the requirement for the law enforcement agency to respond to those? Or do they can, in some respects, in some cases, many of the oversight agencies across the country, some, quite a few that we know of, the oversight agency has the ability to make recommendations, but there's no requirement for the chief of police to say what they're going to do with those recommendations. So you lose your trust very quickly with the community if your recommendations are falling on deaf ears. I mean, if anything, there should be language that requires, you know, you're the head of your law enforcement agency to be responsive in the recommendations that the oversight entity is making. So I'm not going to go over some of the other ones because some of the other ones are very, you know, as far as like, you know, properly, you know, the staffing and the, again, like the reporting requirements, a lot of that stuff. It seems like you've covered a lot of that in your ordinance. So I think at this point, maybe the best assistance we can provide to you is, you know, making that offer going forward. We do do training for boards once they're established because if you're staffing your board with members of the community, there may be that, you know, that need, if you will, to do some, to do some training. Or we can offer more resources. We're doing a lot of virtual training right now. We can offer resources. We do training every year. We do an annual conference. We do webinars. We do academic symposiums. So in any way that we can help you move your process forward and whatever structure you, you know, you land on, we'd be happy to be a resource that you, that you can depend on. But I'll stop talking, and maybe you have questions of Brian or myself that we could answer.
Do we have any questions for our presenters? Raise your hand so I can find you. Alder Abbas?
Thank you very much. Thank you, both of you, for joining today and giving us a very brief presentation. I have one question for Leana, for you especially, about, you mentioned about different type of training for board members and for oversight. Could you please explain how the training looked like? What exactly the training, what you mentioned about training, what exactly the training need? And how long that training and how frequent, in your experience, you saw more than nine different oversight committees? So historically, I also want to know, when you saw those, analyzed them, so did you find like how often these board and committees get training? So could you please explain a little more about it? Thanks.
Well, first of all, you know, whether the recommendations, especially for a brand-new board, is, you know, they're going to need some training right out, right out the bat, but some very fundamental training from, you know, your city with respect to, you know, their role as, you know, because, you know, if they're a city, you know, committee or so forth, as far as the, you know, the rules, if you will, of how they meet. But what I have found, and based on my experience here in Tucson, because I was the auditor, but we also had a board, a community board, we still do, attached to the oversight entity. And the way they do the training, because it's written into the ordinance that they're supposed to get, you know, X number of hours of training a year and also, you know, either participate in attending like the citizens' police academy or training from outside entities, like bringing in groups that handle or that work with the homeless population or, and, you know, how, what are the intersects, you know, with the law enforcement agency or with the mental, mental health issues and challenges? How, you know, how are those, how are officers trained to respond to those type of calls? So a lot of the training for your board can oftentimes, oftentimes can come from your law enforcement agency. But I, it's always a good idea to also have members of your community that are working with these populations to also be part of that, part of that training as well. Some of the training that we give, NACOL, like I said, we do our annual training. Our, you know, many of the communities that have boards attend our training. This year, because of COVID, is the first year we've actually done virtual training. And what we have found is that many of the communities that have huge boards, some of our communities have like 10 or 12 people on their boards, they're, it's been more accessible to them this year because they don't have to travel or anything and we could, they can train up their whole board at the same time, just doing the virtual. We're doing 32 sessions over 10 weeks of training. So there's a lot of different ways to get that training. I think that you have to put something in place as to like minimum training hours that the board should get. But like I said, sometimes it's hard to keep everybody on the same pace, at the same level of training because boards, let's face it, I mean, and this is probably your experience with other boards, by your elected officials, that, you know, you appoint people to boards and sometimes if they lose interest, you know, they're going off and coming on at different times. So it's good to kind of set a training schedule, if you will, for your board. That's what we kind of find more effective. I'm not sure I answered your complete question.
You did. Thank you.
And if I may just add, very briefly, I just want to add that we also, this training of staff, it's not only board and commission members, but staff of oversight agencies. You know, that's how I got a lot of my training when I was new in this work, was going to the NACOL conference, regional meetings. Now we have webinars, of course, the virtual training. So it's also very important for staff to get training, not just from the city and from the law enforcement agency, but specific training around the work of being an oversight practitioner, doing the work of civilian oversight today.
Thank you very much. One last question is about, you know, you mentioned about hold themselves accountable and some expectation of the community with oversight board. I would like to know, in your experience with other oversight committees, what is the mechanism to really engage with the community? And what mechanisms do they use to really reach out to the community, especially reporting incident? But beside incident, also really have a holistic discussion and, you know, have an engagement?
Well, prior to this year, obviously, a lot of in-person meetings would have been the most recommended. There's, there's agencies that actually have staff that do nothing but outreach and have these huge outreach programs. Denver, the Monitor's Office in Denver has a program. It's called Kids and Cops, that they know, that they do outreach to the juvenile communities, the kids, the, it's this huge program because they saw this as an area of outreach that was missing for them. So they've had this program in place for quite, quite a while. A lot of, a lot of oversight agencies are just doing, you know, they do annual reports or semi-annual reports. But I think that for the majority of them, they also just regularly create an outreach calendar and go out and do presentations at, you know, faith-based organizations. Like I said earlier, you know, homeless, with the homeless population. I know the person who took my place at the city of Tucson, he does a lot of outreach with the homeless community. And through, you know, connections that you make, for every one connection you make, you get five other leads of, you know, where you could also be doing outreach. A lot of outreach also happens like through the city court system, you know, having information about the oversight entity, like, you know, pamphlets at your libraries and, you know, on how to, because the first and most basic question will be able to provide, you know, your ability to provide accessibility to the complaint process to everybody in your community. So you, San Jose, California, they have like their, for instance, their complaint intake procedures or their complaint forms in multiple languages. And the, or, and the ability to, you know, to translate the, you know, the complaint forms. So there's a lot of different ways to do outreach. Some people, you know, some agencies have just, you know, staff just doing nothing but outreach. But there's, again, you know, some of your most common places, you know, your constituency are, you know, the primary places that you're going to want to do the outreach. I don't know, Brian, you have some that you do there too a lot.
Yeah, and, yeah, so I'm an example of a smaller city. We're about 100,000 people. And so in our case, I do some outreach work, but actually, our board members do a lot of that work. That's one of the things that, we have a five-member board. And people are pretty passionate about going to community groups, neighborhood organizations, community events, I mean, all the traditional things that we think to do in municipal government around reaching out to people. And also, our city has a community engagement team that has outreach workers, and this is for the entire city government, not just for the oversight agency, that work with specific communities, language-based communities, ethnic communities, and the African-American community. And so they, we make sure they have information. When they're talking to people, they have our brochures if things come up. And we do get referrals from other city agencies. But I think one of the best ways that we've really gotten the word out is through faith communities, community-based organizations, not just neighborhood groups, but, you know, youth centers and different community groups that are really doing work in neighborhoods that have those connections with people that are not based on government, but are based on the networks in the community.
Thank you, Board. Thanks.
Next is Alder Balday, then Furman, then Harrington McKinney. Alder Balday?
All right, thank you, Madam President. So I have a few questions to Brian and maybe Leana. So the first one is you did reference proper resources, that it is important that a body like this have proper resources. Can you deliberate on that more? What does it mean to have proper resources? Are you, and, you know, maybe you can tie this to staffing as well? How many staff will be needed for an agency like this? You also mentioned about losing trust within the community. Can you deliberate on that and maybe a little into how can that be avoided? Or what really leads to, what is the easiest way or the fastest way one can lose trust within the community? community?
Yeah, well, since, so I was about to say, well, through you, Madam Chair, because that's what we do in Cambridge, so through you, Madam Chair. The, in terms of proper resources, a couple of different ways to look at it. One thing that's becoming increasingly common is to actually peg the budget of the oversight agency to that of the police department. So not to make it part of the police department budget, but a number that's often thrown out is 1%, which may sound small, but actually in most cases is quite adequate. I know in New York City, I was testifying before their charter revision commission about a year and a half ago, and in the end, they took a lot of the recommendations of different advocates and the agency itself, and they pegged the budget of their civilian oversight agency at 0.65% of the police department budget, which actually was a significant increase. And that's an agency that already had 150 staff. Now, again, they've got about 40,000 police officers. The other part is really just you have to look at what the ordinance mandates and you have to make sure that your agency has those resources. If you're going to be doing A, B, and C, say you have to view body worn camera footage, well, you need to have the resources to actually look at it, analyze it, have the staffing, the training to do that. And then I guess, let me just keep answering the second question, I'll turn it over to Leanna. In terms of losing trust or gaining trust, there are a lot of ways to do it, but I guess I'll say briefly, the thing I've seen most often is you'll talk about people saying oversight's failing, they're not doing anything, they're not holding officers accountable, the officers get off and all of that. And the biggest thing I would say is that often when people say oversight has failed, it's failed to meet expectations. And that may be because people have been given or just on their own have an expectation that the oversight agency can do things that are just beyond its scope. They may be things that don't comport with state law or local ordinances, or they just maybe things that are beyond oversight about the nature of policing or even more the structure of government, structural racism, the forms of repression that we deal with that show up in everything. And oversight, of course, can do what it can, but it can't transform the entire society. So I think being very clear with people about what the oversight agency can actually do on the front end and as Leanna said, transparency in reporting about the work. If people don't see what you're doing, they assume you're not doing anything. And so much of what we do in oversight is behind closed doors of necessity. So we have to do our best to find ways to let people know what we're doing and what the impact of what we're doing is. And I think that's, that's one of the most effective ways to avoid mistrust or a lack of trust. But, Leanna?
No, I would agree. I don't think I have much more to add, but I, I agree that the biggest piece is managing the expectations. One of the trainings that we do, basically the first slide says, you know, oversight alone is not going to solve all the problems and all the issues and, you know, all the strained relationships, but, but it's a start. And managing those expectations with a community is, is crucial, especially when you're first, you know, putting in, implementing an agency, that's, you know, the best time to, you know, educate, you know, the, the community as far as, you know, the level of, what the responsibilities are and what the level of authority is and so that, so that you don't get that at the, at the end that, you know, there was expectations that weren't met. It's because sometimes that you just don't have that, haven't created that level of authority or it's, it's totally out of the realm of what oversight does. So exactly what Brian said is what I would, I would support.
Yeah. So one more question. So generally you also did say that every board is different, and I think that is because of every community is different. When the OIR report came and they made this recommendation, they also alluded to the Denver Board. How would you say the two aligns? I mean, in terms of structure? What we are proposing and what is going on within, in Denver?
So Denver's, Denver's ordinance has actually changed a bit over, over the years. So they have a monitor and that monitor is, actually he also has authority not just over the Denver Police Department, but over the county sheriffs because he also has authority over the jails. So his, his role is pretty expansive. He has a very large, a large staff. But some of the authority that he has in Denver were things that actually they had to go back, go to a voter referendum to, to get those level, that level of authority. So I know that one of them, I think primarily was, you know, their ability with respect to, you know, the recommendations that were, were being made, like I mentioned, as far as the, the responsibility of the chief or in his case also the sheriff to, to respond to the recommendations. And there was a couple of other things in the ordinance. It was just like three years ago, I believe, almost three years now, that they actually went to a voter initiative. So there, they also have a board, so very similar to what you're proposing. Their board, I don't believe that Nick, that's Nick Mitchell is the monitor there. I don't believe that the board is actually, plays a part in the evaluation of his work and, but he is actually appointed by the, by the mayor and, and confirmed by the, his, the elected officials there too. But, but their board plays a very significant role in the oversight, the, the full model, and they have the ability to, you know, to review his work. And he reports to them on a regular basis. He meets with them, I believe he meets with them twice a month is what I recall. So they work, they work very parallel in a, in a lot of reasons. They, the, the nice part about having a board attached to your monitor or oversight is the board also serves as kind of the outward, a lot more of the outward community facing things because you're, usually when you have a board, they're meeting, you know, they're having public meetings and, you know, the community is able to come and make presentations or, you know, you know, file their complaints or, you know, bring their issues before the board. So there's a huge community component to having boards. So I didn't read too much, all the specifics about what you're proposing with your board, but I think it is very similar to what, 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 what they have in Denver. And this, it's been a very successful model for them for several years.
Yeah. And, you know, they, I think the only thing I would add, because again, everything Leanna said that is exactly right, is that I, just because I've done, we, we know the Milwaukee model a lot better, just because we've worked with them and they've been members of NACOL for years. So I'm, we're aware that there are the police and fire commissions in Wisconsin. So that's, that's one thing that's pretty unique to Wisconsin. I, I was actually talking to someone in San Barbara, California this morning, and they have a police and fire commission, turns out, and actually very similar to what you have in Wisconsin. But that, I think, is the most significant difference. But in terms of the structure and the supervision, yeah, I'd say the biggest difference in Denver is that the board plays a very important role in reviewing the monitor, but does not actually appoint the monitor. But they, you know, they're, if, without their recommendation, the monitor could not continue. And if they, if they, the monitor has their strong support, it would be very difficult as, for the mayor to get rid of the monitor. And so Nick has been in Denver now for 10, 11 years.
At least, at least.
Which is a very long tenure in the world of oversight. You know, I know Leanna and I have just talked about how long we've had our jobs, but Nick and Leanna are a bit unusual.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder Balday. And next is Alder Furman.
Thank you, Council.
Are you? You should be unmuted.
There, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you both for coming this evening. I have, you guys had talked about how, you know, obviously no oversight board is, is the same, they're all pretty unique due to their communities and different structures and states, et cetera. I have a question about two specific things in our proposed structure. And the first one, it has to do with subpoena power. I'm curious to see how often you folks see whether or not the actual independent monitor has subpoena power or, or they have to go to the board to get subpoenas. So I wanted to see, you know, get a better understanding on, you know, what, what other oversight boards have done.
So.
Go ahead.
I can answer first and then Brian maybe can tag on because he does. So at the City of Tucson, the monitor, the auditor does not have subpoena power. But I will say in those 20 years that I was the auditor, I never really needed it, only because, and I'm saying only, because I was fortunate enough that the, the various police chiefs throughout my tenure were very supportive and cooperative, supportive of the role of oversight. So I kind of felt that if at one time, you know, a police chief came along, that was not going to be cooperative and turn over information and to me that I would have needed the subpoena power. Now, I will say that the way, so the auditor in Tucson did not have the ability to conduct their own investigations, but the way the ordinance was written is that we could monitor investigations. So we could actually sit in on the investigations as the Office of Internal Affairs was conducting those investigations. And if I had a question, I couldn't directly ask an officer or witness my question, but I could ask the person within Internal Affairs, which was usually a sergeant or lieutenant that were conducting the investigation, to ask my questions so that we could ensure that all our questions were being answered at the time that the investigation was occurring. So we did not, like I said, we did not have subpoena power. I know Providence, Rhode Island, recently, they have a similar structure as far as they have a monitor and he has subpoena power. And they had an incident just about a month ago where he was being denied access to the body worn camera. And the chief, for whatever reasons, was withholding it, I think because there was potential criminal charges pending as well, so they wanted to withhold it. But in order for the monitor there to do his work, he needed to have access to it. So he had to actually go back to the, because in order to enforce the subpoena power, the way the ordinance was written, it had to be enforced by the consul. So that, so the city consul had to issue the subpoena to their own police chief to comply with, with the records, which is seems to be a roundabout way of doing it. But I know, so I know Brian has subpoena power.
Yeah. And I, I'll just say briefly, because I think Leanna covered it well. So my agency has subpoena power. It's, it's given to the agency, but it's done through the city solicitor's office. So that's our city attorney. But it's, it's not really up to them to decide whether they want to do it, but they have the ability to actually issue it. Now, I've been in the role 10 years and I've worked in the city 12. It's never come up. And it's, again, I've been, I think, in a good position where we have a fairly cooperative city government, thus the police, the four police commissioners that I've worked with, two interims in between someone who retired and our current police commissioner, it's our chief, have been very cooperative. I am able to go into professional standards, our internal affairs, I meet with them at least once a month to review cases and investigations. And I have been told, go on in the file room, you can look through what you want. So I haven't had to use subpoena power. And, but I, we have it, I could use it. It hasn't come up in probably 20 years.
Council President, would, would it be possible for me to pause my time for a moment? I know Alder Moreland is here and has a cutoff, a very soon cutoff, and wanted to at least be able to talk to the board. Would that, would that be possible?
I'll come back to you then.
Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Alder Moreland.
Okay. I hadn't planned to, to join this as I'm on vacation, but I'd received a few phone calls and a few emails regarding this. And I, I wanted everyone to know that, you know, a lot of thought went into this. And basically, as I mentioned to a lot of other people, our, our charge as an Alder Work Group was to look at the ad hoc committee's report and put the report into ordinance. There were some areas that weren't as clear, but because a number of the Alder Work Group, I mean, not the Alder Work Group, the Ad Hoc Committee Work Group attended all those meetings, we were able to ask them if they could provide us what they believe the intent of the committee was. There were several orders that joined those meetings. And I, I understand the questions and I definitely understand the concerns, especially regarding the budget as we're going into a very difficult budget season. But I would hope that everyone has read the report, read the recommendations, have read the ordinance and could, you know, outline, because this is going to give, this, we're going to have a robust conversation at council regarding this. But we, we didn't go into this inserting our own opinions into this. We, we went into it looking at the charge that was given to us and was before you now is the product of that charge. So I appreciate the, the comments, the, the questions. I appreciate the, the members of NACOL being on the call because a lot of the information and a lot of our direction came directly from information that we received from NACOL as well as contacting different jurisdictions regarding how their civilian oversight committee is set up, a board and the Monitor's Office. I do want to say that, you know, everyone on our Alder Work Group, we want this to be successful. So we, you know, if there are components of this that will lead to an unsuccessful setup, then we need to work through that. We, we need to know exactly why. We need to rely on staff to tell us why subpoena power is not a good idea and why it won't work. We need to know, you know, the, the budget, you know, is there a way for us to get budgetary dollars from other organizations? Because what's been presented to us several times is the amount of times, time in years that the ad hoc committee put in to, to produce this body of work. And I think if nothing else, we owe them the, the level of support to take their work, put it into ordinance and then work through the kinks. So I appreciate everybody's questions, concerns. We are, you know, again, we, we lived up to our charge, I believe, and we are willing to, to go through whatever modifications, if modifications are, are needed in order to set this office and the Oversight Board up for success.
Okay. Thank you, Alder Moreland.
And with that, I'm going to get on a cruise on Lake Superior. Adios.
Alder Furman, can you continue?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'm grateful. Alder Moreland was able to come from her vacation and make a quick comment. Thank, thank you both for answering the question about the subpoena power. I mean, it sounds like it's, it's used rarely in what you guys have seen and experienced, but it might not necessarily be on, it's not necessarily uncommon to see that the independent monitor directly have it. But, but it's fairly rare that it would be used and I'm hoping obviously that's the case here as well. My other question has to do with the reporting structure. Our ordinance has set it up such that this particular person will be reporting to the board and an executive committee. How often do you guys see that in examples of oversight boards where it doesn't report to somebody like the mayor or, or another, you know, city employee? I understand that independence in the police department obviously is incredibly important, but the actual reporting, you know, just to a board, I don't know, that's being proposed in our ordinance, how common that is?
I think, actually, I think that's very uncommon because most, most of the oversight entities actually report to, you know, an elected official, either a mayor or, or, you know, the city manager. But I won't say that just because it's uncommon, that that's probably a good idea because it, it kind of de-politicizes, if you will, the, the, the reporting structure. If you take it out of, you know, the, the, the city structure, I guess you could say, depending on how big and how diverse, I guess, your, your actual board is. So it's pretty uncommon to have it structured the way you have. So I'm not saying that it can't work. I, I believe it could. Brian, I don't, I don't think we know of any that are set up that way, do you?
Well, I, the only thing I think of is Oakland, I think now, because Oakland also had a charter revision on the ballot. And so their police oversight commission basically was reformed anew with different structure, different powers. And they now, they, they're really like a police commission, which you see in, say, Los Angeles or San Francisco or something like that. So they have much broader, I mean, it's actually, you know what, it's more like the police and fire commission in a certain sense. But they have the ability to hire and fire the, in Oakland, the director of the civilian oversight agency. And I know there are a couple of other places that do that, I guess. But the only thing I would add to Leanna's general point is that the other piece, to balance that independence, because you do want independence and you want the monitor to report to whomever they're reporting to, but to really be independent to the extent that they're able to make the findings that, you know, wherever their investigations or their reviews of systemic issues lead them, they need to have the independence to really make those. So, I mean, no matter what the structure is, it's important that there aren't political pressures on that person to make certain findings or to get in trouble because they're not finding enough, police officers have been guilty of misconduct when the complaints have come in. They have to follow it where it leads. So the, and the last piece around that is just that it, it's, what you're proposing still puts it inside government. And I, this is probably obvious to everyone, but there are increasing calls to try to set up oversight that's somehow outside completely of the government structure, yet has authority over the police department. And there are some theoreticians who are working on it, some law professors. I have yet to see anyone propose a model that, that looks truly viable within a governmental structure. So you, you want to create as much independence as possible in these multiple dimensions.
So a quick follow-up to that. So in the, in the situations where you do see So in the, in the situations where you do see mayors or city managers, this position reporting to that, is there normally pretty good independence because of how public the position is and because of boards? I mean, are there, you know, are there things that can be done to make sure that there is, you know, you know, there isn't political pressure if it's reporting to a city manager or a mayor? And still, you know, make sure that there's some independence there? Because it sounds like it's fairly common that that's the case, so I assume that's, that succeeds. But, you know, what, what are some of the, the, the points of success for that? You know, how would you, how are cities making that successful and not having interference? Reporting to a mayor, for example, or a city manager?
Well, maybe I'll start, because I don't have that much to say about it. I can mostly talk about my personal experience, which is I work in a city where we had a very long-term city manager for over 30 years when I was hired. His deputy took over and now we have another same manager. And with, you know, with sort of the nature of politics in our society, it's not, his contract is up in October and it's not clear where things are going with that. So I've been in a position where I've had a lot of support from my city manager. They have all recognized the importance of this role. And as, as small as my office is compared to the police department, they recognize that for the police department to have legitimacy in our community, there has to be external oversight. We were one of the earlier communities in the country to develop civilian oversight. We go back to 1984. So it's very embedded. If the city manager started interfering, there would be a lot of pushback from the city council. And there, I've really gotten the support I need. And I've never had any pressure to not report something or to look at findings differently or anything like that. So in my personal experience, it has worked well. But that's also, as I said, it's a very specific experience and the history of our city. So Leanna, you, you probably have a better, better overview of, of the national scene.
No, I mean, so similar to like other department directors and department heads in, in cities across the country, most are at-will employees anyway. They're, you know, they're appointed and can be removed for cause or, or not. I, I, I don't think this is, I haven't really seen this play itself out with maybe one auditor in just probably the last 10 years in a city where, and that was because of a conflict between that particular person and the, and the, the chief and the reporting, the, some things that were reporting that were not factual. And I think that that was substantiated and that individual ended up resigning. But I don't think it was under, necessarily under pressure that, or, or because it was politically motivated. I think it was because it was more performance, you know, performance related and rightly so. But I think that, you know, this position kind of may be different than some of your other department heads in that you will, that, that person will also rely on the trust and the goodwill that they've created with the community. With, and, and that level of, you know, community support is, is, like I said, you know, very important, that, you know, that transparency and trust. And if the community is feeling that that individual is doing their job, if there was any kind of, you know, interference with respect to, you know, an elected official trying to remove that individual for political reasons. I mean, there's no 100% guarantee of any of this, right? But I don't think that we've actually seen that, you know, play itself out, you know, in general with, you know, the monitors or the auditors across the country.
Yeah, you know, that, that just reminds me, I, I think, you know, with any system, you have to be constantly paying attention, because I maybe, I'm not sure if this is the situation you're talking about. I can now, I'm thinking of a situation where there was an independent police monitor who was under the city's inspector general. And the whole idea of that was to make it outside of politics, right? The inspector general is separate. They have this broad mandate to look at misconduct in any part of the city. And in that particular city, the inspector general was not particularly interested in having a separate civilian oversight entity. And so it ended up, there was a long process that ended up with a short-term agreement to pull the police monitor out of the IG's office. And then it went, there was a referendum, it went to the ballot, and the citizens put it into the city charter, the independence of the independent monitor from the inspector general. So something that on paper looked like the perfect solution to ensure that in a city with a long history of political corruption, there would be no undue influence over the independent police monitor. It ended up happening anyway. So I don't, it's not to say, don't worry, don't worry about it or there's nothing you can do, but it is to say that one needs to be vigilant. And no matter how much we try to create the perfect model, you always have to be checking it, looking at it, seeing what's happening and, and making sure that people are able to do the work they need to do and get the support they need and that they're outbuilding the trust in the community and with all the other stakeholders they need.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Alder Harrington McKenney.
myself. Thank you very much, Madam President. I have a series of questions and I'll start with this one. I, I hear independence and how critically important it is for the monitor to have that sense of independence. But I'm also hearing that there is a stakeholders, some kind of symbiotic relationship building. And so, so could you speak to that? I mean, because when you say independence is that I stay over here in my lane. But then when I hear you weaving in stakeholders and you're able to have a cooperative getting the information I need to do my job, could you say more about how that thread goes? And two things, how the thread goes? And then have you had any instances where it wasn't that stakeholder collaboration, for a better word?
I'll let Brian think about this. So, you know, the word, I, I think when we, and, and we really zoom in on the independence a lot, but I, I think a lot of it, what we're trying to get across is the independence for them to be able to bring to light information they have, regardless of, you know, how good or how bad that makes your police department look or, or what have you. So it's the independence to bring information forward and to be, again, not afraid of losing their job for saying, you know, wherever the facts lead. I, I always used to say, oh, you're, you know, I, I used to get criticized, oh, you support the police department or you support, you know, the, the, the complaintants. And I'm like, no, I support the process. I'm an advocate for the process, that I work independently in that I'm not really an advocate for either side, but that the process is fair and thorough for both sides. And that, that's, you know, that was important for me. But I think when we're stressing independence, we're talking, you know, independence to make your recommendations, to make your findings, to, you know, pub, do your public reports, to not be pulled back from saying something for fear of, you know, we're gonna get sued. Or, you know, it is what it is when you have the facts to support. When you're, you know, reviewing an, an investigation, it is what it is. That's what the facts support. And, you know, the second part as far as, you know, the stakeholder engagement. The stakeholder engagement is important because you want to, you want to have that level of voices, if you will, in the community. You want to have your finger on the pulse of what your stakeholder groups are facing. What, you know, what are some of their concerns? What are the issues? What are the things that are coming forward? And you need to be able to, in, in many cases, absent a complaint, if you have a stakeholder group coming and saying, you know, this is what we're hearing, this is what we're seeing, this is what we're feeling, to be able to have the independence to bring those issues forward as well, without saying, oh, you don't have a complaint, you can't look into this. Well, why not? This is an issue of, that this particular segment of the community has right now. And it is directly related to, you know, the police, police department and their operations or what have you. You should have that, that level of comfort, if you will, that, that you can bring those things forward. I don't think I answered your question about the stakeholder.
Yes, you did.
I did, okay.
And I, I, you know, again, Leanna covered it so well, I don't have much to add. You know, the, the materials that we've shared around recommendations for effective practices, touch on some of the specifics very briefly. So I'd say it's a combination of the political independence and operational and procedural independence, really being able to do your job. I mean, so much of this comes down to both having the resources and support, but also having the independence and the freedom to do the work that you've been asked to do. And again, when someone was asking earlier about, you know, what are ways to lose trust? When people see an oversight agency that has been given this set of tasks and yet they don't have the independence to do it, they don't have the budget to do it, that's where you, you can really get into problems. But this, to reemphasize one thing Leanna said, it is about being fair and impartial. And I, one of the things that is often most challenging about the world of oversight is civilian oversight wouldn't exist if there weren't problems. And very often, law enforcement misconduct or problematic procedures and training that affect individuals and whole communities. And so there, the reason we exist is because of a need for people to be taken care of and to receive that support and justice. And when we are looking at individual complaints or even trends and patterns, we have to be fair and impartial. So there's, it's that balance between, we know why we're here. We know we're, the reason we exist. And most people that go into this work have an interest in social justice. And at the same time, as Leanna said, we have to go where the facts take us. And so we can neither find for or against the police department or for or against complainants, because that's what we think should happen. It has to be based on specifics. And so independence actually is really important for that, because you can get a lot of pressure that, you know, we saw these videos, you, when you do that investigation, we know you're gonna find this. And you may or may not, like any investigation. If we knew what happened, we wouldn't have to investigate. So there's, you have to have independence in all of those aspects. But it's really independence to do the work you've been asked to do.
Thank you, thank you very, thank both of you. My second question was related to the relationship with the board members and the executive committee. And you've already addressed that when I called or asked that question. The, the next thing I, I wanna know is, is there board compensation? What, what is, what is that, that model? Is there board compensation for service? I'll, I'll leave it at that. Is that clear enough?
Yeah, and that, actually, that's a question that we're asked quite often. I know that in some places, there's like stipends for, depends, you know, sometimes you're asking a lot of your board. Sometimes if the boards are in the, have the authority to also review, you know, cases, you know, that's, that's a lot of extra materials and so forth that, you know, that, especially if you're asking them to meet like maybe more than, more than once a month. So I'm not sure which cities though have stipends. I think Atlanta might have stipends for their board. And Atlanta is an example of another agency, I believe, that there is an executive director of the Atlanta Oversight and he has, he has investigators that work for him. And then there's also the correlating, the, the board as well. So the board can ask the, the executive director, what, what have you, to conduct investigations as well. So they, they do have an investigation body there. And so I do think that their board member might have stipends. I'm not sure, because I, I think it's very rare. And, and again, it's depending on how much you're asking your, your board to do sometimes.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, could you say, speak on the selection process for board members? So have you seen one process work? There's several processes? So I know, Brian, you said that you've been in that position for like 10 years and you've been in oversight, Leanna. So how does that process get you to a place on the board?
Well, so let me just say quickly that, so I'm staff, I'm not on the board, right? I'm the, my title is Executive Secretary. So I'm basically the executive director. I'm the only person in the city of Cambridge whose title is Executive Secretary. But, but that's fine, it's just, it gets, I, people get confused sometimes. So I work as a staff person. And the board members in our city, every board and commission is, is, members are appointed by the city manager. That's in the city charter, state law, actually. So, but of course, the city manager's office has each department set up a process to solicit names from the community, do outreach and interview people. And then, so in our case, we have, we have very general criteria, but we do interviews. And those interviews always include me, usually someone from the city manager's office or the, or main city hall staff and one or two members of our oversight board. So that we have, you know, we, we come to some agreement. And then those names will be proposed to the city manager often. This, our city manager wants to have more names than there are slots, so they have some choice. So you may be asked to provide three or four names if there are two open seats. But that's, again, that's very, very specific to us. I know, and again, I'm, I'm gonna defer to Leanna, because Leanna just talks to people all over the country all the time. So there are a lot of different ways to have people appointed, have people selected, have people voted. You know, everything from Detroit, where each city council district also elects a member to their police review board, there's a civilian oversight board, which again, is more like a police commission, because they have some authority over the, the police department budget. And they have to approve warrants, kind of like a city council for the police department, to places like mine, where the board members are all appointed by the city manager or the mayor. But Leanna?
So really, you know, with, with the appointment of your board, obviously, what you're striving for is, you know, diversity of voices. And so you're trying to get, you know, as broad representation, you know, of your community as possible. So many, many of them are structured, just like Brian says, where the elected officials appoint, have the authority to appoint one or two individuals, you know, to the board. Some, some are structured, so here in, in the city of Tucson, the elected officials, each one gets an appointment. The mayor has an appointment. But the board itself, once it's created, has non-adviser, has advisory members to the board. Also, they can appoint up to four additional members through, you know, like an application process when they, if they see that there's a need to, you know, maybe the, the voice of the youth population is not, is not being represented or maybe the homeless population. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of different ways to go about it. We've been doing some work with Athens, Georgia, and they created a, a community task force that we've been working with. And I think that, you know, they're at the point right now that a lot of the members that are part of that community task force represent a lot of the advocacy agencies in the community. So those, they're trying to incorporate that in the requirements for, you know, the appointment to the board. So they're looking at, you know, how to get best represent, you know, all the different voices of the community. Because that ultimately, at the end of the day, that's what you're trying to get on your board. So there's different ways to go about it. You know, an application process, sometimes it, it is good. But then again, you wanna be as inclusive, you know, as possible. So, you know, how you structure that is going to be, you know, your, your preference as elected officials are. You know, how you think you can get the most diverse board created.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, just to jump on, add one more thing. The other piece is really, that may not seem obviously connected to it, but I would say is training. Because when you are working, you get a really diverse group of board members. Again, I said, we have five, so there's, we do our best to be really diverse here in Cambridge. But if you have people with diversity of experiences, knowledge, you really want to make sure that you're doing very robust training. Because the last thing you want is people to either not really understand certain things about oversight, or I would say even worse, to have people who feel marginalized, because there are certain people on the board who, you know, they're very educated, they use big words and, and, you know, I'm coming here kind of representing a community viewpoint, but I'm not as good at debating. I mean, that's one of the biggest challenges I see in this work is, you know, our model in our society for public meetings and debate is all about, you know, who can debate, who can speak, allow this, who's willing to get up and speak. And so working, when you're really trying to do that diversity, create that diversity, making sure people have the resources so that they can be fully participating members. And that's an ongoing effort, you know? It's not a, we train everyone the first month and then they're all set. It's gotta be ongoing, continuous education and, and training for people.
Alder McKenney, you are muted.
Okay, my, my final question is, is that we've talked about the, the independent monitor and we talked about the Oversight Board. And since we're going into this really as a, as a new entity, what must come first? In your experience, do both of them come in at the same time? And so in your experience, is there one format that, that kind of leads the way? Or, so that's what I wanna speak to you is, is that how do they enter? Do they enter, one has to come and be in place first? Or they must come in at the same time? And then as a caveat to my question is, is that ultimately, when they say the buck stops here, where does the buck? Thank you.
I don't think there's an actual recipe for- I don't think there's an actual recipe for which, which one should come first, because they're usually, they're usually created at the same time. Although I will say, I'm working with a city right now that is like one of the top 10 cities in the country, top 10 largest cities in the country who does not have oversight. And there's been a lot of push and tug with respect to creating oversight. And I just talked to one of the elected officials there last night, because they're creating a monitor, auditor position, and a board. But they feel that at this time, they want to create the auditor, monitor position first, and let them staff up their office and so forth. And then they're gonna go within the next, like, three months later, create the board. So that there can at least be some momentum with, you know, some structure in place for when the board comes on, to help them, you know, move forward with, you know, bringing them, you know, training and so forth. But I don't, they're usually created at the same time, but it's, again, there's no recipe for what works best.
Yeah. No, I would agree. I was just thinking of another city I know of, that they started a process, and they hired a monitor, who's then going to help them craft the ordinance, and then find, get a board. So I mean, I've seen people do it all different ways. I don't know that there is a, this is probably one of those things where it's more about the best fit, you know, thinking about your community and establishing legitimacy. And again, and, because we keep talking about the community members, I do want to emphasize that you also need to create legitimacy with the law enforcement agency. So yes, the police department works for the city, yes, they work for us. And if you start off where everything is completely at loggerheads, it can be hard to then do the work of oversight. So it doesn't mean that you have to, you know, whatever they want, we give them, but working to do your best to make sure that they are seen as stakeholders, who, as this develops, can have a sense that, okay, I may not necessarily love civilian oversight, but you know what? This, these people are working to be fair and impartial, they have a good process, and, and we can develop some trust. It usually takes some time.
I'm sorry, Alder, Alder heard, there was, there was another part to your question, though, that I don't think we answered. What was the second part?
Oh, my, well, I think that you did answer it. My, my second, my second question, I'll put it out there again, is ultimately, the relationship in terms of, when you say the, the buck stops here, is that who, of the two, who has the, and I don't want to use final, I'm searching for words, but kind of help me as I'm wordsmithing, is, is that we have an independent monitor, we have an oversight board, and when there's a decision process to make, where does the buck stop? And that completes my questions. Thank you.
I don't think that's ever kind of like writ, really written into like ordinances or legisla, I think it's really more a given that it stops with the person who is the actual, I, I guess I would say, the, the actual staff person for the city, because you're representing the, you know, you're, you are an employee of, of, of the, the city government structure. Your, your board is not necessarily, you know, employees. And I, I think it, it depends on what the, the actual issue is, as far as, you know, who's taking responsibility for, you know, coming and making the press release about this, or who's going to be the person responsible for, you know, making the recommendation. It's usually the, you know, the appointed, you know, staff person, for lack of better terms. But, but then that's difficult, too. I mean, it depends on, you know, how you're structured as far as who that person is reporting to. And that's something that's, actually, that's a question that's really never come up, as far as who is the ultimate, I think usually the, the executive of the oversight entity is usually the person that takes that on, that, you know, it's my responsibility ultimately.
Yeah. And, and I, hopefully this is responsive to your question. I think in terms of stepping back from a little broader view, because I agree with what Leanna has just said. And if you're thinking about, like my role, for example, so that's all true, and yet on specific cases, when the board votes and makes determination, I mean, that's their determination. And then with our state law in Massachusetts, the police commissioner is really the person that imposes discipline. That's not up to the board. There are boards in cities around the country where boards recommend, or may occasionally even impose discipline. Generally, that's up to the law enforcement executive. And in Cambridge in particular, if there's the, if the, I forget, if it's suspension for more than 14 days, or anything beyond that determination, the city manager also is involved in that. So it really goes all the way up to the top. But that's, that's, you know, it's, so, yeah, I think what Leanna said overall is very true. It's not necessarily written down anywhere, sort of, who has the final authority over all these different things. But if it's about the specific determination of the board, that's their determination. If it's about a finding, a staff investigation, that's the, the finding in the report, and the board may or may not choose to accept it. But, so I don't, and hopefully that's helpful. It may not clarify anything, but.
Okay. Thank you, Alder McKinnney. Next is Alder Skidmore.
Thank you. And thanks for being present to provide this information and answer questions. I found it very interesting, and I'm glad that I'm kind of at the tail end, because I heard a lot of good things that I like. I heard training of the board, I heard independence, I heard police and fire commission. And I got a couple of questions, starting with the training, particularly with the unique setup of the state of Wisconsin that has very powerful independent police and fire commissions that were actually established by state statute 135 years ago. And we have very unique powers, they're very powerful. And I'm not sure how familiar you are with them, or how much others are. But would you say it'd be advisable for members of the, of the Oversight Committee to have, be trained by the Police and Fire Commission, so they understand the very specific statutory rules that limit what, what anybody other than the Police and Fire Commission can legally do?
I think, yes, I would agree. I think that, that, that's important, because that all goes into when they are, you know, your board is reviewing a case, for instance, and that you have a better, that your board members have a better understanding of why or why not, you know, the, the individual may have acted or not acted in a, in a particular way. So to, to an extent, yes, that, that is also part of the training that would be very valuable as well. Just, just same as you, like you said, your state statutes, you know, First Amendment, you know, search and seizure, you know, some of those legal statute, laws that are, you know, that, that officers have to, you know, comply with, the, your, your board should also have at least familiarity with them, is, that would be a good foundation for their training.
Good. Thank you very much. That's, that suffices for what I need on that. The second question is relative to the makeup of the boards, the oversight committees. And I heard one committee is, I think, Brian, you said your committee has, the one that you're associated with had five members. I think Madison is going to have significantly more than that. And I'm wondering, do you feel that this oversight board should be representative of the entire community, and not just those that might have an axe to grind with the police department, or be stacked and have a bias?
Well, you know, it's, I guess what I would say is, I, you know, I don't think anything should ever be stacked or biased, because we believe things should be impartial and biased. And I think it's, it's really up to each community to figure out what's the best way to, to be truly representative of the diversity. I mean, when you have, I, so my board is five people, it's very, very challenging to get five people who are wanting to serve a five-year term, that represent the diversity of a city of 120,000 people in Cambridge, where we have two major universities, and we also have 40% of our school kids on free or reduced lunch, right? So you want to find a way to manage that diversity by, you know, constantly looking at, who do we have, how do we recruit a diverse set of people? And whatever people's backgrounds, I mean, it's a little bit like a jury, right? So with the jury, the idea is you bring in people from all walks of life to come in, you give them some guidance, and we trust them to make determinations that can have huge impacts on people's lives as regular people. So clearly, oversight's a lot more specific. We're talking about, you know, orders of magnitude, more training for oversight board members and staff than we are for people who get on a jury and watch the video and get their own instructions, and the judge tells them some things. But to me, it's that same principle, that people can come from different backgrounds, but they have to be willing to say, you know, this is my lived experience, this is my understanding of the world, this is how I see things. And then we look at the evidence, we look at the report, and we also talk with each other, and we hear different perspectives. And we need to be open to, to not coming in thinking we know the answer and sticking to it, but being willing to see the evidence, hear each other, and then come to a determination that, as best as we can, as individuals in a group, is unbiased. So I think that, you know, people will come to the table with opinions and axes to grind, and if they're good at interviews, they're not going to put their axes on the table. So you have to work to create processes that can encompass people with diverse viewpoints, and help them to make decisions that are right and just.
Okay. And as a follow-up to that, in your experience working with other boards, do you see where as a setup by ordinance, there are designated slots and roles or positions to fill from the get-go, that you have to be, have a certain predisposition, or be from a certain background in order to be eligible to be appointed?
I'm going to, Leanna, really answer this? I mean, I, my sense is it's increasingly common. I think that 20 years ago, that wasn't really the case. But I'm seeing it more and more, where boards are being established with either specific numbers, or with, as your ordinance does, you know, looking at specific organizations or type of organizations. And it, but it, but it varies quite a bit. But, Leanna, you, you know better than me, I think.
It, so it does vary. And it depends on your community, what, you know, what organizations within your community you want, you know, at, at the table. We've seen boards, I was talking to one yesterday, they have 30 board members. And I'm like, how do you, how do you manage that? But they're all important voices from their community, and it's a very small police department. But they want those 30 voices at, at the, you know, at the table. So sometimes people will drop off, too. They, they, they want to be on the board for reasons that perhaps may, like you said, Aldrin, as far as, you know, access to grind or what have you, and then recognize, you know, what their role is. And, and some people just drop, you know, just drop off the boards. But it is important, I think, to have that diversity. That's, that's what we're seeing more and more, that as they're establishing them, like I said, in Athens, they're saying, okay, there needs to be a representative from this organization, from the Latino population, from the NAACP, from, you know, the mental health community, from, so they're picking not necessarily people, but a voice from that community, so to speak. So they're not saying, this, you know, John Smith has to be on the board. It's, you know, somebody that represents that population, or, or that organization to be represented on the board. So it is more and more common that, you know, they're designating specific slots for organizations or community groups.
Okay. Last question, then, in your experience, and it sounds like you have a lot of experience with these boards. Have you seen many representatives of victims' rights organizations that might not necessarily be adversarial to the police that have a, are, are appointed to these boards?
Oh, absolutely. And I think they bring a very powerful voice to the, to the board as well.
Thank you. I agree with that. That's all for now.
Thank you, Alder Skidmore. Alder Hennick?
Yes, thank you. My first question was, I, I heard you say, talk about building legitimacy with law enforcement. How do you see that with, with remaining independent and in the nature of the, the oversight, how do you see different cities building that kind of trust yet staying independent?
Well, I guess I'm probably the one that said that, because I say that all the time. So let me, let me start. Yeah, I, well, I mean, that's, that's a great question. And I think part of it is, when we talk about legitimacy, you know, there, I, I wish I had some slides in front of me, because I have some good definitions. But if you go back, by, one of my touchstones in some of this work is the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing Report. So in that, they, they talk, you know, quite a bit about procedural justice and legitimacy. And so legitimacy in policing really is derived from, you know, in this framework, procedural justice. That, you know, you, the traditional way of police saying they're legitimate is because the law says I can. And so where you're looking at procedural justice as a form of legitimacy, people believe the police department is legitimate, because they're treated with dignity and respect, because they have a voice. And that could be in the inner, individual one-on-one interaction, or more generally, as, as groups and communities, they have a voice in the type of policing the community wants and needs. They have the, the sense that they, their dignity as human beings is really being respected. And those principles are also important for oversight. So legitimacy doesn't mean that, you know, the police department's going to get what it wants, and they think we're great, because we do whatever they tell us. But it means that they believe that we are here because we are trying to do something that's legitimate. We're trying to fairly discern whether or not officers followed policies and procedures, did something right, did something wrong, and more broadly, whether the policies, procedures, and training of the law enforcement agency are appropriate in what the community needs. And you can do that, and be very clear about when you disagree with the police, when you think people have been guilty of misconduct. But it, that has to be in a context where people feel that you're doing it fairly and impartially, that you have the information you need, that you have the training, that you're not just, this isn't just your opinion, because you don't like the police, but this is your opinion, because you understand how policing works, how the law enforcement agency is trained, what they're supposed to do, and, and you've looked carefully and decided whether or not they've done what they're supposed to do. So in, in that specific sense, and then more broadly, it is about having personal relationships. And that doesn't mean that it's a friendship, right? But you have to have enough of a personal relationship that's respectful, that you can disagree, you can argue, you can come down different positions of things, but that you're seen as someone who, you know, is working to do the right thing for the right reasons. You're working to make policing better. You're working to ultimately ensure that the community that we're all living in, wherever we are, is peaceful and just. And in that sense, we should all have the same goal. So I think, to me, building legitimacy is really building on those core values in a community. So I'll, I'll stop my lecture series and hand it back to Leanna.
Now, I think, you know, from, from the get-go, when you're putting in a new oversight entity, that's the first, you're building your credibility with not just the community, but also the law enforcement agency. And like Brian says, you're going to have these situations where you agree to disagree, because that's just the nature, the nature of the work. But we have seen situations where a new entity has come in and has decided that, you know, they're going to go back 10 years, you know, and ask for data from 10 years ago, or from complaints that have probably already been, just for lack of a better term, adjudicated through the complaint investigative process. And that is seen as, you know, by the law enforcement agency is, you know, you're, you know, you're trying to dig up old stuff, you know, you need a starting point from here forward. And I think that sometimes that's the downfall of some of the new agencies that are being established, you know? It's just like, you, you know, everybody has to understand what the rules are, and what the rules are going forward. You can't apply something that you've just created to something that's happened in the past. So sometimes those are the, the hurdles of credibility and legitimacy that you have with the law enforcement agency that you need to establish, establish upfront, because there's going to be a lot of mistrust upfront. And until they see, you know, that this person, you know, whoever you put, the, the monitor and, and even the board, there, there will be that, you know, fear of the unknown, so to speak. And it, it will take a while to, to gain that credibility and that sense of cooperation and, and, and trust, that, you know, when you're making a recommendation, you're doing it for, you know, fact, based on factual, you know, information.
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate that. Another one was, we've talked a lot about the, the makeup of boards. What do you, do you see entities or, or types of people, backgrounds excluded from boards typically? I know one of the things we're looking at is excluding any prior law enforcement experience or, or relatives thereof. Do you, have you seen that before? Or is, is that something that, do monitors? Um, do you, have you seen that before or i- is that something that, um, mon- do monitors ever have backgrounds, uh, law enforcement experience or do board members, um, ever dabble in any of that?
So many of our monitors do have, uh, law enforcement, you know, their, the, uh, background. Um, so, uh, I think that, uh, a lot of the boards have the requirement that, you know, you can't be current or former law enforcement. It seems like there's more of a, I guess, more of a prohibition on the board side than it is on the monitor side. Or maybe it's only because I haven't seen that many former law enforcement, you know, uh, applied to be the monitors. The moni- uh, one of the monitors in, uh, Oakland was former law enforcement. He's with Seattle now, uh, with the oversight entity. Um, but it seems like on the boards, usually the prohibition is you can't be current or former law enforcement. Not necessarily, you know, to that degree of, you know, related to, you don't see that too often, but, uh, current or former. And many of the boards also have a member of the board, um, as a non-voting member that is current law, it can oftentimes be current law enforcement with, you know, the law enforcement agency because they can bring a sense of, I want, you know, subject expert, if you will, especially if the board is deliberating, you know, how are the officers trained to respond to domestic violence call? Or how are the officers trained for this? You, you wanna have that information so that the board can make appropriate deliberations if they're, you know, reviewing a case. So many times these boards will have non-voting members as, you know, our representative from the law enforcement agency to be able to provide them with, you know, information about training or about policy or whatever, so that the board has a better understanding of that.
No. Um, and I don't, I don't have too much to add, um, other than I, I have seen all sorts of things. I mean, I've seen boards where there, there is someone, it's mandated that there's someone from law enforcement. And some, I think in Cleveland, after their consent decree, they actually, um, it was mandated that they have a current law enforcement officer on the board as a voting member. Um, and as Leanna said, many places will have a non-voting member and there are places that exclude, uh, law enforcement. I think, you know, the, the thing you wanna think about is really, you know, and this is about your city. So this is really about what's going to work in Madison for your community broadly is that there's always concern about bias, right? And in this particular work, there, in this, this particular time, there's a deeper concern about people associated with law enforcement cannot be impartial. And so then you have to kind of think about our principles. If, if you believe that they can't be impartial, do you believe other people can be impartial? And that's, again, this is not to say what the right or wrong answer is, but it's, it's something you have to grapple with. And there are good arguments that one can make about why you want someone with law enforcement background as part of that conversation and, um, but, and there are very good arguments to make, why not? You know, and I, um, the last thing I'll just say is an, an interesting thing about Detroit. Um, and I say it not just because I'm from Detroit, because this is not connected to that. But the board in Detroit, I believe, um, they have eight people elected by district. They have, I think, three or four mayoral appointees. But the last I knew, I think four of the people on the, on their board were former police officers, all people of color who ran as public officials and said, I'm a former cop, I'm a person of color, I know where the bodies are buried, you want me on that commission. The people of Detroit have said yes. Now, is that the right thing? I don't know. I, I honestly don't know if that's the right thing. But it's really, any way you decide to do it, you can find someone else that's done it that way. And I think the most important thing is to, to think about those different arguments and reasons and, and balance that out. And, you know, obviously you were at the point as a city of, on the cusp of possibly adopting this ordinance. So you've done a lot of that work, um, you know? And it's one of those things that you might look back five years from now and say, you know, this is what we did, but our lived experience in this work has said, you know, we want to tweak this a little bit. And that's actually one of the things that we've talked about a lot with oversight agencies around the country is, um, you know, you work as hard as you can to create the right model that's going to work. And then you might look back three, four, five years later and say, this is what we thought and here's what we're finding. And I know my ordinance was created in 1984 and it was amended a couple of times, most recently in 2005, because some of the provisions just ended up not being workable. So anyway, I, too much, I would want to keep going on and on, but.
Thank you. Um, one other question I had was, when you're speaking about investigations, I heard a lot of times you mentioned that the board had requested that the monitor perform an investigation on, on one thing or the other. How does it look if they're both doing investigations? And do you see that and can, just can you give us a feel for what that looks like?
When you say both, do you mean both the, uh, the monitor and the law enforcement agency or the monitor and the board?
The monitor and the board. So in, in ours, it's the, both of them would have the power to perform investigations. Um, so have you seen that before or what would that look like? How would you see a, a board performing an investigation?
And, and I'm sorry, if I ask one more question, I, I feel like I ought to know this, having read things. But you mean about they could do a concurrent investigation about the same complaint? Or they could just be doing different investigations at the same time?
Uh, it's my understanding that they could be doing different investigations at the same time. And, and it says that the, uh, the last pair, or the last sentence in one of the bullets is that the board has the ability to perform investigations.
I don't, I don't think I can give you any insight on that because I'm not, um, really not aware of any, um, any existing entities right now that both of them would have the ability at the same, uh, you know, to be doing investigations. It's usually, it's usually the board or the monitor, not, not both at the same time. I can't think of any, Brian, can you?
I, I can't either. I mean, I think about Fairfax County, Virginia, which is, you know, largest county in Virginia, pretty urban, 1.3 million people. They have, uh, basically a monitor and a civilian review board. The monitor and, um, it's, it's he in this case, he and his staff, uh, staff the board. But the board, and the board looks at policy, they, similar to what we talked about Denver, they have a role in reviewing the work of the monitor, both, you know, small scale and, and large scale. Uh, but they don't have independence staffing to do investigations. So, um, I mean, I guess if the, if you're talking about the board members as individuals actually investigating, I've never heard of that. I'm not quite sure how you would do that because then you'd have to train, uh, board members to do all the work of investigation. And that's, that involves some serious training. I was having a conversation earlier today with the Deputy Director of Training for New York City about some of the, the details of how they do training for their new investigators. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that may be a challenge, uh, to do, uh, to that because I haven't seen that.
Okay, thank you. Um, that is, oh, a- as far as training goes, how much or how do, how do boards often stipulate how much training a board is required or board members? Do they do an annual number of hours typically or in different categories?
Right. Usually like we, um, here in Tucson, we had, uh, 40 hours a year of training. I know Indianapolis is very similar to that, 40 hours plus, uh, X number of hours of ride-alongs as part of their training. Um, some boards, um, I think probably that's the rule of thumb, you know, 40 to 50 hours because these are volunteer board members. Uh, I know some, some cities, uh, will try and do all their training maybe in, you know, semi-annually, you know, do a full day training to try and get in, uh, training on, you know, current topics or issues or questions that may be, that they may be seeing coming up as they're reviewing, uh, cases. Uh, but there is, uh, a mandated, uh, at least a minimum amount of training. But 40 seems to be the, 40 hours seems to be the magic number that, that most are, are leaning towards.
And i- is there often a, um, they have to have it done by a certain point in the year or when it's, that they, in order to serve on the board, they have to have that training done first? If it's a new board member, um, how does that relationship usually work?
Many, uh, many of them, like for a new board member, they'll do s- something similar to like onboarding with respect to, you know, the, the, this, you know, this is your role, this is how we're gonna, you'll get complaints. This is, you know, more procedural things and, uh, maybe trying to get everybody, it, it's, it's hard. Like I said, uh, earlier, it's hard to get everybody at the same level of training be, just because, you know, people are, come on and come off. When you're first starting out and you're creating that board, obviously everybody's gonna be at the same place. And then you need to figure out how, you know, what that term will be. And if somebody leaves before their term and you replace them, then, you know, you're playing catch-up with them. So, uh, it's kind of rule of thumb is also, you know, to, that the board, um, you know, that there be a way to obviously track the training hours, uh, but, uh, definitely an onboarding process at minimum. And then, uh, you know, I, I think they do it like within, you know, that the training has to be done within a year. Uh, because, you know, sometimes you're, you're working off of different, different schedules and kind of sporadically. And especially if you're getting training from the law enforcement agency, you know, that they bring or you go out to the academy or whatever, you know, it's, it's sometimes a lot of resources that have to be pulled together to get everybody trained up at the same time. So, um, but when you're first starting out, it's easy because everybody's on board at the same time. And then it kind of becomes a little more challenging as you move forward.
Um, then also on, as far as metrics go, you talked about success and, um, expectations of the community. When you start out, what is it, do boards ever, or do, does an oversight office ever look and say, okay, at the end of the year, here's what we're gonna look at? You know, we've, we've got in there an evaluation or a annual report on what the board's doing. Do you ever set expectations at the beginning of the year and say, you know, here's what we're looking at? And then be able to compare that at the end of the year? And what have you seen boards do in that area? And, and how do they convey that to the community to be able to say, look, this is what the board was supposed to be doing and they're, they're being very effective or, um, you know, in different aspects?
You know, I guess I'll start because I think Leanna's gonna have more to say, I hope. Uh, I mean, I've seen, you know, a few different things and again, it varies a lot by city. So I think about my own city and our, how we do our budgeting. Ours is more tied up with the budget process and benchmarks. And, um, but I've seen, you know, there are civilian oversight boards that have strategic plans and the board and staff work and develop a strategic plan and, you know, update that every year. So I, I think there, there are all sorts of models. But Leanna, you, you talked to a lot more people, you've seen a lot more of this.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I, I think at minimum, sometimes, uh, obviously you, the, the data of the number, you know, the number of complaints, maybe the number of investigations that you reviewed that, uh, you either agreed or disagreed on and, you know, ultimately what was the outcome of those? I mean, things that you can easily report on. I think, uh, any recommendations that you make, especially when you're first starting out, um, how you're evaluating the complaint, like maybe the complaint intake process. Uh, are you doing, uh, you know, uh, complainant surveys, uh, to find out the level of satisfaction, you know, from your complainant? I think that that's important, especially in the first couple of years because you're building a process to, you know, I, I talked earlier about, you know, having intake, you know, for complaint forms in different languages and so forth. If you do, you know, at least some kind of a minimal survey, a lot of boards like to do that as far as, you know, what was the response time, what was the turnaround time? Were you adequately notified, you know, throughout the process as to the status of your complaint? So if you could do surveys like that and report, report on those and also make, uh, report on, you know, what was the outcome of recommendations, uh, recommendations that you made? Now, there's a lot of, uh, several, and I, I think, uh, Denver, uh, pretty much does it, is one of the, uh, I, I, one that we point to very often that does it really well, when he does an actual report on, um, on a particular issue, um, that, okay, this year, e- especially like, because he has oversight over the jails too. We're gonna look at, uh, you know, complaints, you know, from the jails on this particular issue and we're gonna make a report on it. And then we're gonna do another report on it, a follow-up report on it, you know, three or six months later, uh, as to, you know, what is, what has changed. So, um, it can be whatever you kind of set up. But I think, uh, if you, if you do benchmarks as far as, you know, complaints, satisfaction level, uh, you know, reviews of, of investigations that you either agree or disagree with and, you know, what was the outcome? You may, you know, San Jose, California does a lot of reporting too, not, not just on data, but also on issues that they're, uh, that they're looking at and issues and recommendations.
Alder Hennec, are you done with your questions?
That will be all for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, um, we have two more people. I would like to get done with the presentation in about seven or eight minutes. So, um, Alda Turner, you're next.
Hi there. Uh, thank you very much for taking the time on this Friday evening. Um, so I, I had three quick questions, like, um, basically what does a day look like for an auditor or a monitor? Um, like in terms of, you know, is it mainly use of force, uh, issues that are, uh, complaints that are brought to your attention, uh, officer-involved shootings? Or does it really, um, run the gamut of every, everything that a police officer made contact, come in contact with a member of the public vote? Uh, that, that would be one. And, um, the, the, the second one I had is, is there, uh, in other jurisdictions that have, have monitors and boards, is there any mechanism for, uh, a police officer? Let's say they have an officer-involved shooting and, uh, it's, it's under investigation, uh, but a, a, a board member or an entity that's sponsored the board member says, F the cop's guilty, ascend, he needs to go to prison for murder. Does, is there any mechanism for a police officer to demand, uh, recusal of that board member from any, any role in deciding that? Since it seems like it's been prejudged, um, prior to the completion of the investigation. And then I guess the, the third question I would have is, um, I, I think, Leanna, you had mentioned how when you were, um, monitor, um, the Internal Affairs Department, you would be able to go in there and, uh, you wouldn't ask questions, but you would be able to provide your questions to, uh, one of the officers present. Uh, one question I have is in Wisconsin, um, when we have officer-involved shootings, uh, especially our Wisconsin Department of Justice comes in and, and does the initial investigation. And so, uh, how, are, are there monitors in other jurisdictions in the country where they have a similar arrangement where there's a, uh, either they're, they're, I think some states have bureaus of criminal investigation and others might have, um, Department of Justice like we do. But, um, the question is how, how does that interaction work when the initial investigation is being done by, um, an entity that's outside the jurisdiction of, of the police department and the community where the, uh, the incident occurred? So those are my three quick questions.
So can I start with your last question first? Because I, I think this goes to the, to the expectation piece as far as what is it your, the, the authority and role that you're giving your moni- uh, your auditors or monitor? Um, I think it's important to, to note that your oversight entity is not necessarily given, none are given the authority to make, um, criminal, file criminal charges against an, an officer. There's, there's a whole other structure in our government set up for that. So usually if there's an officer-involved shooting occur, uh, that is being investigated, the monitor is, the investigation can be occurring at the same time a criminal investigation is happening by an outside entity, which is usually the case. Um, the, the role of the monitor of the oversight a- agency and even the law enforcement agency, they're all also looking at, you know, the administrative part of the, uh, of the actions of the officer. So many times an officer will be cleared criminally and not find, uh, not be found, uh, that you can't file any criminal charges against the officer for those actions. But administratively, they may have violated something and that's what you're doing. You are, you're doing the investigation or you're looking at the administrative investigation. I will tell you, the city of Tucson, we have had shoot, we had shootings in the past where the officer was found, uh, not criminally chargeable, but was terminated because he or she violated, uh, you know, a training protocol or an administrative directive or something that could have prevented the, the incident. And it was very obvious and therefore they were either disciplined or terminated. So yes, you can do parallel investigations as long as the auditor and the law enforcement agency, that the, the piece that's doing the administrative piece, um, that you're not, uh, going to do anything to compromise a criminal investigation because that's, you, you, you really have to separate it. Uh, anything that can be used, that's used criminally can be part of your administrative investigation. But if you're doing an administrative investigation and find something, um, that comes to light, you can't use it on the criminal side. So you have to keep that wall between the criminal and the administrative. It's very important, it's a very important, um, line, or if you will, uh, to stay on top of. Um, it, with respect to the comments from members of the board, uh, most are structured in a way that's similar to, uh, you know, your elected officials that you have one voice that can only speak on behalf of the board itself, so that the only person could be like the chair. The, you know, the chair of your board is the only person that's allowed to make, uh, you know, any kind of public comments about an incident. And usually those comments are going to be, uh, you know, hopefully, usually those comments are gonna be that they can't really comment until, you know, the investigation is completed or, you know, or, or final. So, um, usually the, uh, the way you're structuring the wording, wording for the requirements of your board is that only, you know, oh, a- as a board member, only comments can come from the chair. oh, as a board member, only comments can come from the chair. Only, you know, the chair is the only one that can make public comments. But I mean, I agree, I mean, your, your comment about should they recuse themselves if, if there is another? I, I don't know of anything, I can't point you in a direction that anybody that has that language, but I can see that, um, that, that could be a possibility that, you know, if an individual makes that comment, that they should be recused from being part of, you know, administrative, you know, review or investigation. And then your first question about what, a day in the life? I would hope that a day in the life of a, of a, of the auditor or monitor wouldn't involve a lot of use of force or officer involved shootings, because I wouldn't want to be doing business in that city. It's a, um, it's really a, a lot of things. It's, you know, complaints, you know, the intake, you know, outreach, uh, outreach opportunities, you know, going over and reviewing complaints, maybe sitting in on, um, many of these, uh, many communities around the country right now. It's been, a lot of law enforcement agencies are creating, uh, separate like, um, use of force boards, because it's not necessarily, you know, use of force is not just the officer of, you know, a shooting. It can be a lot of different types of force that, you know, especially if your agency has canines or, um, you know, all the different types, you know, do the, are they using, you know, um, OC spray? Are they using, you know, what tasers, whatever? All those, uh, uses of force have to be reported. And a lot of very progressive chiefs right now are creating separate boards that they bring community on and even their oversight entity on to review all those incidents as well. Because there's a lot of that that goes on that's not even reported. Cause it's not, you know, the headline stuff, but it is happening and it is things that have to be reviewed. And there may not be a complaint, because, uh, you want your monitor to have the ability to look at things that are outside of a complaint. So not just as a complaint comes in, that's the authority that they just have to look at that one particular thing. If you can get them to look at the bigger picture, like I said at the beginning, um, that's important as well. So I would say a day in the, in the life of an auditor is a, a lot of different things too. And, and a lot of it is, you know, the community outreach and, you know, um, even going to the trainings too. I sat in and I made presentations, I did a lot of presentations, uh, to the academy. Uh, because there's that expectation, you know, in, in the police academy that, you know, they, they are told, you know, you are also subject to not just internal affairs investigating your actions, but we have this monitor and we have this review board and they will also be reviewing your, uh, it should come no, as no surprise to you that, you know, there is an oversight entity. So I used to do a lot of training out of the academy as well.
I'm not going to add anything because when I said, well, and I know President Carter wanted to, and this is relatively quickly. I have nothing more substantial to add. I think that's all very, very accurate and important.
Well, thank you. And, oh, Alda Bedar, you have the last question? Here, I can't find you. Oh, there you are.
I think I'm here. Thank, thank you so much. And, and thank you, Leanna and, and Brian. And, um, I, I also want to thank Brian and Nicole for assisting the Alder Work Group through Attorney Strange as we developed these proposals. So that, that was extremely helpful, um, in the development of our proposals. So a couple of questions going back a while ago now on the training that we mentioned. So, um, I know you have, um, looked at our ordinance and it has an entire kind of paragraph around the training and, and support that is needed for the civilian oversight board. Was there anything in there that you saw as, as any, um, anything that we, we didn't include in the kind of the, the series of, of training that we talked about? That we should be aware of, that you can think on?
Well, um, to say quickly, I, you know, I looked through, there's a lot of material. So I did look through it quickly and I, I have it in front of me right now. Um, I think it, it's, you know, it covers a broad range of things. So I think in terms of the topics, that always good, I would, my personal thing is really looking at the role of trauma. So I don't know if that needs to be in the ordinance, but I mean, that's the other thing. It's not, it may not end up being in the ordinance, but I don't know if your boards and commissions develop rules and regulations. Um, I know we, we do that in Massachusetts, it varies by state. Um, but really I think, you know, we of course would recommend Nicole's training, but there are, there are other trainings out there. And I do think that because of, we bring, you know, we done this year because of the COVID pandemic, but we generally bring together hundreds of people from around the country. So not only are you getting the valuable training, but you also get to talk to other people and hear their experiences. And, uh, the last thing I'll say about oversight is that it, I think this is responsive to your question. It can be a very isolating field. Um, unlike most things that I've done, um, generally if you're doing your job well in oversight, everyone is at least somewhat unhappy with you. So, um, giving people training that helps them to kind of deal with that, to balance out these differing issues. And so I think in the specifics around use of force, cultural awareness, the complaint process, public meeting laws, all those are very important. But also thinking about how do people get, um, I don't know if it's exactly training, but the support they need to continue to do this work. And that can be through Nicole, that can be through things within the municipal government, within the community. But, um, but in terms of the specifics, I, I thought this was a very good basis. And it was very interesting for me to see childcare put in there. Um, it's something I hear people talk about a lot, but I don't think I've ever seen in ordinance. So I, I really appreciate the, the thought that's gone into really making this something that is doable for people who are asked to be on this board. And yeah, anyway, I'll stop with that.
No, I wouldn't add anything. I think it's a very inclusive, uh, list. Uh, Nicole, we also have a peer support program. So, you know, your, your monitor can, you know, peer to peer. We, we match people with, you know, professionals in the field, even on, even board members, with board members from other cities and, uh, to, to offer that level of mentoring and support as well.
So, um, my other question is again, going back at the beginning of our conversation, you mentioned that, that generally was 1% of the budget, um, of the police department and ended up in kind of being a, kind of a way to, to really think about what the budget of an independent monitor office would look like. So in, in our, um, city is $84 million for the police department as a budget and $450,000 proposed budget for the independent monitor. So does that kind of, is, am I correct in saying you were saying about 1% sounds like?
Well, let me just, just clarify, I think that, I would say that's a number that people are throwing out there. That's why I was saying in New York City, the number that they came up with was 0.65% and that that was more than adequate. And in, in New York, one of the, the specific things that changed that made them want that increase was that when the New York City Police Department got body worn camera footage, it meant that there are dozens of investigators who are now, in addition to all the other things they've been doing, they're having to review, it could be tens of hours. I mean, if you have a situation where there are 15 officers on scene and things go on for an hour, 15 hours of body worn camera footage. So it's, um, I, I don't think that 1% should be seen as if it's not 1%, it's not sufficient. I mean, and really looking through the various memos that you've produced. Um, I mean, you, you, your city has been very thoughtful about what are the positions and how much would cost? And, and even to the point of including a specific line item for training from Nicole. I mean, that was very gratifying to see. So, um, I, yeah, I, I, I don't think that you should feel like, oh, if it's not 1%, that's not going to be adequate.
And then my last question is to confirm that you said you hadn't, um, really seen any civilian oversight boards being in charge of actual investigation? And you read correctly that ours is not set up to be in charge of investigation. So I want to confirm that, that that's correct.
Okay.
You haven't seen it and ours is not, is that, you, you haven't seen it, is what I'm asking? And ours is not? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank.
Very kind words.
Thank you, Alder Bedar. I don't know where you went, but thank you. I just have one question and that is the, uh, monitor staff and it's only a two-person office. It's the admin and the monitor. Have you seen an office that is that small? And what, what would be the minimum number you've seen in your work? And in this, in the monitor's office? Cause Brian, you said you were deputy secretary or something?
I'm executive secretary.
Executive secretary.
Yeah, so, so.
Sorry about that.
No, it's, it's perfectly fine because it's an unusual title. Thank you. Uh, so in, I mean, I would say I'm at the smaller end, right? So I have, I'm, I do these two roles. So basically the police review and advisory board in Cambridge is, um, I'd say about 0.8% FTE. I'm sorry, not 0.8%, 0.8 FTE. Uh, because my time is split between the peace commission and the police review and advisory board. And I have someone that works with me, an administrative and program person, who I share with our human rights commission. And so, um, that person, um, actually used to be an investigator for the Washington DC Office of, of Police Complaints. So she's invaluable, but her job is not to do investigations, but she manages the case files. She and I both do intake. So it's, and there are places that are even smaller than that. But Leanna, you can, you, you're again, you have the big national scene more in your mind.
So I will tell you that, you know, the city of Tucson was created originally with just the, the auditor and an administrative support staff. And it's not enough right now. We're actually going back and revisiting the staffing. Because with the introduction of, like Brian said, the body worn cameras, if you want people to do data analysis, if you want the outreach done, uh, we have about nine, I don't know what the size of your law enforcement agency is, but we have about 900, uh, sworn, uh, officers. So, you know, it, it depends on the number of complaints. And are you going to look at all complaints? Or are you only going to look at a, are you going to establish a threshold that you're only going to look at? Use of force, racial profile or racial profiling, inappropriate service? Uh, some agencies, uh, will, you know, categorize the complaint levels that the oversight agency can look at to make it more manageable. I will tell you, like, um, New Orleans, for example, our current Nicole president is, uh, the monitor in New Orleans. She has a staff of five, uh, because they do a lot of data analysis and reporting. Um, they have body worn cameras now too. They do a lot, they have a huge community engagement piece over there too. So she, it, it seems to work well for her with the staff of five. And I will tell you in Tucson, it's not enough what it is right now. So they're looking at revisiting that. You know, Denver though has, you know, 2,000 officers, he's got a staff of about 15. So, um, it, it's, you know, it's all relevant, I think, to the number of officers and the number of complaints and the priority that you're going to give as far as, you know, what, uh, what complaints you want them to look at.
Well, thank you so much. Oh, go ahead, Brian.
The only thing I would add, because I realize we've hardly said this. Um, the number of complaints is a key metric in this, because, you know, my office gets at most 15 complaints a year, which is good. I used to be concerned, but I think it's because we've done a lot of work in our community to improve policing. So it's okay that we have a relatively small staff. But if you're getting, their city is the same size as Cambridge, where they get 150 complaints a year. And that's, that would be completely impossible to do without a more sizable staff. So that you, you'll have to look at the number of complaints you're receiving, recognizing that when you set up a new mechanism, that may shift. You may, and most likely you will hear more complaints, you will receive more complaints. So that's, that's also part of trying to figure out how much staffing you need. It's the volume of complaints. And as Leanna said, that's not the only work, but it's a, a key part of the work that really can drive staffing needs.
Thank you so much. And I do want to thank you for coming to the CCCE meeting today, because so many of us obviously did not get a chance to talk to you like the Alders Work Group. And I think this has been very beneficial for the rest of us. And thank you for taking time out of your evening.
Thank you. Thank you, President Carter.
Yes, I agree. Thank you so much, President Carter. And just please know that we are a resource. We will be here as you continue this work to, um, pass this, implement this, make any changes or not. Nicole wants to be your partner and in this work to improve policing in your community and make sure that you're able to say that you have done something that has really made a difference and improve the lives of the residents of Madison. So we want to be your partners in that. So thank you for inviting us and thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Alder Abbas?
Yeah, can I do a motion to recess for five minutes?
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. It's been moved and seconded. May I record this as a unanimous vote? Okay, I will record this as a unanimous vote. Thank you. We'll be back in five minutes.
All right, President Carter, I'm ready to do a second roll call whenever you're ready.
Yes, can you do that? Thank you.
Alda Carter?
Present.
Alda Carter is present. Alda Abbas?
Present.
Alda Abbas is present. Alda Harrington McKenney? Alda Harrington McKenney. Oh, she is present. That's her. Alda Skidmore?
Here.
Alda Skidmore is present. Alda Hennick?
Present.
Alda Hennick is present. Alda Tierney?
He's here.
Here. Alda Tierney is present. Alda Campbell?
Here.
Alda Campbell is present. Alda Bedar?
Alda Bedar is here.
Okay. We have Quam.
Thank you. We will now go to item four. Can I get a motion for item four, six one, six, six, seven, adopting the final report of the Alder Work Group? Oh, I'm sorry. Alda Abbas?
Motion to adopt.
Alda Campbell?
Do we have public comment on this item first?
Yes, we do.
Yes, I thought we did that after the motion. Okay. Thank you.
Tessa President, would you like me to go through the list of those who are registered and don't want to speak but available to answer questions? And then we can go through the ones who do want to speak? Or how do you, would you like to proceed?
Let's go through the ones that are available to answer questions and then the ones who want to speak. So we can do all of them at, you know, one after the other.
Okay.
And they have three minutes.
Right, okay. So for item four, we have Keith Finley in support, but doesn't want to speak, available to answer questions. We have Jennifer Rubin in support, does not want to speak, available to answer questions. Elizabeth Bruner opposes, does not want to speak, available to answer questions. Daniel Gray opposes, does not want to speak, available to answer questions. Chelsea Pistana in support, available to answer questions. Addie Hope's in support, available to answer questions. Annalise Parker in support, available to answer questions. Yativa Robles in support, available to answer questions. Mason Johnson in support, available to answer questions. Zachary Shay in support, available to answer questions. Luke Geister-Jones in support, available to answer questions. Andrew Francis in support, available to answer questions. Lair Feltham in support, available to answer questions. Ella Quentin in support, available to answer questions. Anastasia Hansen in support, available to answer questions. Seth Hecox in support, available to answer questions. Thomas Kuzulakis in support, available to answer questions. Deborah Elsas in support, available to answer questions. Douglas Andreezy in support, available to answer questions. Elizabeth Holden in support, available to answer questions. Kathleen Sandin-Thomas in support and available to answer questions. Benjamin Uliano in support, available to ask questions. Jonathan J. Mason in support and available to answer questions. Oliver Truesdale in support, available to answer questions. Kyle Wallace in support, available to answer questions. Casey Lomensky in support, available to answer questions. Greg Jones in support, available to answer questions. Jess Waggoner in support, available to answer questions. Sean Sullivan in support, available to answer questions. And that's it. The rest, there's a list of supporters and those in opposition who do not want to speak at all, and those will be added to the legislative file and will be sent to Alders. So for those who do want to speak, first up, we have Jacob Winkler, who's in support and wants to speak.
Jacob, are you on?
Yes, I'm on. Thanks for giving me some time. In what I've heard from the presenters and some of the concerns from the Alders around the, around the proposal, most of the stuff in question, the presenters have said, yeah, we've seen that go either way. And the work group has spent time weighing both those options and has put forward a proposal. I think the biggest thing to maintain is the independence about it should be separate from the mayor's office and its powers related into investigative capacity. I don't think I have much more to say beyond that.
Thank you, Jacob. Next. Quazy, you're muted.
Next, we have Keith Finley in support and wanting to speak.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was registered to speak. I think you've heard my perspective on this before. I'm happy to answer questions, but I don't need to speak independently.
Thank you, Keith.
Next, we have Bianca Tomassini in support and wanting to speak.
I do not see anyone by that name.
Okay. Next, we have Alan C. Robinson in support and wanting to speak.
Are you on?
I am.
Okay, Alan. We can hear you.
Well, excellent. I, I'm the executive director of Wisconsin Normal. I'm coming on to say that while a, the work group has put forward all this effort in regards to putting forward this proposal, and I think it should be adopted. However, I think that the committee needs to definitely take into account what sort of issues are going to be brought up to the committee. I don't think that the threshold should be very high because what we see, and what I've seen in other communities is that police end up getting a, they end up getting it passed because the violation doesn't seem like it reaches the bar. And I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen in, in Madison. That's really all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Next, we have Kathleen Fulan in support and wanting to speak.
Hi. In an email that all of the members of the CCEC should have received Wednesday, the League of Women Voters of Dane County urged the CCEC to support creation and funding of the Office of the Independent Police Monitor and the Police Civilian Oversight Board, addressing items four through seven on your agenda today. The email mentioned the multimillion dollar settlements and the other issues, which made it clear that even Madison's diverse and professional police department needed a review of its policies and procedures. Madison is fortunate that back in 2016, the Ad-Hoc Committee began that review and in 2019, recommended many improvements to our city's police department. The most central and critical being establishment of the civilian oversight board and the independent monitor. It is clear that an ongoing structure is needed to ensure that our police policies and procedures are consistent with our community's values. We understand that there are costs involved, but there are costs involved with continuing as we have in the past. Therefore, this spring, when calls for police reform erupted nationally and locally, our city had a substantive plan of action that we could put into operation. In June, the city council approved formation of the Alder Work Group to finalize the proposed ordinances governing the independent police monitor and the civilian oversight board, based on the recommendations of the Ad-Hoc Committee. Their meetings were open for public comment and well documented to allow public review throughout the process. The Alder Work Group received excellent staff support from several city departments to accomplish its thorough and timely work. To summarize, the League of Women Voters urges the CCEC to support the Ad-Hoc Committee's and Alder Work Group's recommendation to ensure that our police policies and procedures are consistent with our community's values by creating and funding an independent monitor and a civilian oversight board.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Julia Matthews in support and wanting to speak. Sir, Julia Matthews?
My name's Julia Matthews. I've been a lifelong Madison resident, K through 12, went to UW Madison for undergrad, and now I work in UW or at UW. And I guess I just want to say that the, a lot has gone into this Ad-Hoc Committee and the formation of the board and the oversight. And it's all extremely like well past due. And it's also literally just about the least that we can do to start working on better oversight in our police department and moving things towards something that better fit the values that we have as a community and the values that we, we like to try to be very vocal about having, regardless of whether there is strong evidence to back that those values are genuine. So that's pretty much all I have to say. It's, it's pastime. There's been tons and tons of time put into researching for this board and tons of work, and I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gisela Wilson. Sir, Gisela?
Hello? Yes. Hello? Hi, yes. I'm Gislau, and I have been a resident of Madison since 1981. I currently work at the UW. I've been following this process with president, not president, but present for all of the Ad-Hoc Committee meetings that considered the recommendations. I was present for not quite all, but the majority, large majority of the Alder Work Group meetings. And I just want to say this, this proposal before you now represents years' worth of work and consideration. And everybody has had a voice. Everybody hasn't, has had a chance to give input and be present. It's really, really important. And you heard that from the presentation today, that independence from the mayor and other political electives can be a very important part of what determines the success of measures like the one we're about to undertake, as are powers of investigative capacity. But I really want to talk about the issue of bias, which is a little bit different from the email that I sent the Alders today, and I hope you've had a chance to read. I want to talk about the issue of bias because right now, the current system is biased in favor of the police, those with traditional power and traditional standing in our society. Biased in terms of the chamber, voices from the Chamber of Commerce, for example. And if you want to look at this, this is a little bit like sinking ship. And the people who are overpleased in the marginalized communities, they're neck deep in water. And maybe some of our toes are getting wet, maybe some of our feet are in water up to the angles and up, up in water to our ankles. But it's wrong for the people who are, we don't want to tilt that power structure even, so it's even more off kilter, and we don't want to keep it the same. So we want to adjust for the bias that's existent in the present system that is actually causing the problems that we're seeing, both in policing and society in general. And so for that, I think we don't need to look at the term diversity in terms of respect with who's on the, just on the board, being representative of the entire community, which is something I think a few people might be feeling. What we really need to do is to adjust for who normally gets heard in our entire community. And it's going to be up to them, whether they're going to be, we can give them all the tools that, that they need, but really it is going to be up to them and the training that they receive, whether they're able to build the conduit of communication with the police department and our governance that's needed. Of course, if you go the traditional power route, there are other less controllable ways for these communities to gain a voice when their oppression becomes intolerable. And that's to continue the protests that we've seen all this summer. So be aware of what you're voting for if you vote to change this resolution or this ordinance in any way. And that's all. Thank you. This is past due.
Thank you. Next, we have Tannen Scriver.
Hello, yes. My name is Tannen. Thank you very much for the Common Council, for their time. I appreciate this whole experience. I'm a citizen around the Madison area currently. And it's, I'm very new to this experience, but I'm looking to gain more insight. The reason that I support both are all four, five, six, and seven of these movements is because, again, to speak on what other people have mentioned, it is very much passed overdue. Between 2013 and 2019, police have killed 125 people in the state of Wisconsin, and seven people in, from the Madison Police Department have killed seven people, I should say. I absolutely support the fourth movement for this because our police departments need, need to be, have oversight. If you all did not know, 99% of police killings between 2013 and 2019 in our country have had no accountability. No officer was charged for a crime. It is long past due that we put independent eyes on the operations that our police force, our public defenders do. And I also want to echo that this, again, is long overdue. But on top of that, there has been a lot of people working and putting time into making sure that what this resolution is putting forth is well informed, and it's including the community members that have not had voices in the community, in the operation of our public officials for a long time. It's absolutely pertinent that this is passed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Gregory Galambert.
Hello. I served as a member of the Ad-Hoc Committee, and I'm here to speak in support. And I believe that in your hearts, you know that supporting this proposal has written, is the morally right thing to do. Other communities have attempted civilian oversight of police with notably mixed results. The Ad-Hoc Committee very carefully researched these other examples and created a detailed blueprint for an independent modern board in Madison designed to overcome the problems that have plagued some other cities' oversight structures and take advantage of those features that have helped auditors in other cities succeed. Adequate empowerment of the monitor is one crucial aspect. Another crucial aspect of that is composition of the civilian oversight board. The design of the board for Madison follows recommendations from the ASU and others. As a Chicago Police Accountability Task Force report noted, quote, "real and lasting change is possible only when people most affected by policing have a voice," end quote. Right now, they have no voice. As a minor point, I'll add that two of the groups specified to do nominations specifically work with domestic abuse and sexual assault victims. Moreover, the Ad-Hoc Committee report and ordinance specify very extensive training of the board members to ensure well qualified decision making without excluding community members. I'll mention here a few key points. In the US most auditor type oversight In the U.S. most auditor-type oversight agencies are empowered to initiate and conduct independent investigations. That is crucial power. Auditing and investigative functions are complementary, with both required to uncover patterns and draw proper conclusions. Moreover, as NACOL advises, quote, "if you're able to include subpoena power in the agency's enabling legislation, by all means included," end quote. Also, extensive reporting and outreach is written into the proposal, providing accountability to the community. In addition, auditor-monitor-type model carries important benefits beyond a mere investigation-focused model, as the ad hoc committee report noted, quote, "a monitor has the capacity to examine policies, patterns, or practices, and can be effective at promoting long-term systemic changes," end quote. An overview of civilian oversight of law enforcement in the U.S., authors Barbara Attard and Catherine Olson of NACOL note that in order to succeed, the oversight body must be independent from not just the police, but also elected and other government officials. NACOL also recommends, quote, "reporting structures, the civilian oversight agencies should be structured within government so as to minimize real or perceived political influence on the decision-making, reporting, recruitment, and termination of key political staff," end quote. In Madison, an existing body that doesn't report to an elected official is the Police and Fire Commission, an arrangement designed to maintain independence for exactly this reason. Likewise, the A S O U recommends an oversight body that is independent not only from police department, but also from politics, with a board membership that is majority-nominated by civic and community organizations. Denver provides one example of what happened to Not Have This. During the monitor serves at the pleasure of the mayor, in the municipal scandal involving the police chief, the Denver mayor apparently decided to shield the chief and abruptly barred the independent monitor for participating in cases involving the chief, contrary to prior practice. The community was outraged, and experts agree that this subverted the role of the independent monitor. That's the kind of situation you want to avoid in Madison. Under the proposed Madison ordinance, the independent monitor reports this civilian oversight board with day-to-day supervision by a three-person executive subcommittee, but also be supported by the Human Resources Department, and each meeting will be staffed by the city attorney's office and M P D. There are some other cities with similar arrangements of the auditor reporting to the board. Brian mentioned Oakland and Syracuse as another example. The administrator, basically a civilian police auditor in Syracuse, reports to the citizen review board, not to elected officials. There is now severe loss of legitimacy and trust in policing, especially in Madison's marginalized communities. This is resulting in serious non-cooperation with police, including for crime victims. Many people have lost faith, and acting through the system can bring useful change, which is contributing to rioting. The independent monitors and the oversight board are properly set up and empowered, provide a key means of rectifying that. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ankita Baradwaj. I apologize if I mispronounced your last name. Ankita?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hi, I'm Ankita. I'm a lawyer from India. I'm here at UW Law School. For the last five years, I've lived in Madison, and I agree with all what the people in support said, but I just want to reiterate the importance of this ordinance. I just want to say that right now, cops do not seem to be, cops in the community do not seem to be on the same page. And since cops, the police institution itself is the right arm of the government, and the government is supposed to be for the people, by the people, of the people. It doesn't look like it's like that. That's why we need this ordinance. Also, imagine a robot which doesn't get input from its programmer, but it has to do stuff, and its output is basically unsupervised. How would it act like? Science would have failed us. Just like that, I feel that our laws and governance are failing us if there is no community input to the cops. I also want to say that cops can easily become dictators if they do not have the input of the communities about what is hurting us, what we want, and what we don't want. And we don't want dictatorship in democratic America. The bosses of the police institution must be the ones paying for them. We are their employers. It is counterintuitive and counterlogical to do otherwise. I just recently came across an example where an officer intimidated a victim and a witness in a crime as her son was, and an individual in the crime involved in the crime, and she's under investigation. But you know what's funny? The funny thing is that she's under investigation by other cops. So it's like saying, like investigating a wrongdoer and expecting other wrongdoers to investigate her. Of course, you're going to be biased, and the definition of wrongdoing would be compromised and biased as well. I think the members of the board should be non-citizens as well, and affirmative action should be given for Black people, indigenous people, and people of color. I want to support electing the members of the board and not appointing them, because we want to keep them separate from the state. As I've already said, cops are the right arm of the state, so we want to do that. Otherwise, it defeats the purpose of the whole ordinance. I also believe that opposing this ordinance is maintaining a status quo. As it's apparent, it's not working for us, and I would really appreciate if we had a roll call vote. And thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tyson Vitale.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. One second here. I was caught off guard. That was really quick. Hi, my name's Tyson Vitale here on District 16, Michael Tierney's district, on Dell Drive. And I want to implore you all to just support the work group recommendations as a whole and specifically for number four and what is before us right now. You know, they have included the voices of the communities that we need to factor in, and specifically the ones that have not been included for far too long, that have literally led to the injustice that we have seen so tangibly as of late. Like, we need to make sure that we do the right thing here and that all of you do the same, and that you value and prioritize what really needs to be prioritized in this moment. Excuse me. Quite frankly, I just want to have some real talk here about what I've seen and heard in this damn meeting, especially from the white men right now. I have heard nothing from any of you regarding concerns about bias and what we're actually talking about, except for towards the police and towards the people that actually have power and authority currently. I have not once heard the Black folks and other marginalized folks in this city, this city with one of the worst racial disparities in the country, actually talked about and asked about or inquired about or cared about in any of your inquiries. And quite frankly, obviously, y'all have not done your homework. I expect you to support the hard work that Shiva Bedar, Donna Moreland, Rebecca Kemble, and all of these folks, and all of the community members, in the five-year-long process of the ad hoc recommendations that have been put forth, have put work into. And I expect it to be railed. I expect it not to be saying, oh, well, if it was this way specifically in my preference, because I have a certain preference, then it's okay. No, that's not okay. That's not okay. And obviously, from the questions that you guys have asked today, y'all have probably, some of y'all probably haven't even read the whole damn thing, quite honestly, like hearing some of the questions that I've heard today, and just inquiring. And some of y'all obviously haven't even talked to the Alders that were crucial in this, in making this, or the community members either. And so I ask you, why do you think that the community should trust you if that's the case? They shouldn't. They should trust the folks that put the work in, that reached out to us, that really factored in and valued what we need to value right now in this very moment, and that's what we should do. When we look back at this crucial moment in our community, during a time of such distress and a man to value what we say we do, but have failed to live up to for far too long in this community, how will we view your priorities and your decisions that you make today? What side of history will you be on? What is the legacy you're going to leave? And that question is open to you, and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have Penicia Clifton.
I do not see anyone by that name.
Okay. Next, we have Laura Christina Valderrama.
I do not see anyone by that name.
And next, we have Deb Rogers. All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This plan has been worked on for years now, passed over and over by each city body whose approval was required, modified, and crafted to the finest detail. It comes up again now, and it seems this hurdle will contain more demands for modification. I'm entirely opposed to modifying it further. All the attempts to modify it have sought to make this independent monitor position weaker, less able to do the job it's meant to do. There's talk again of the police needing protection from us, the citizens of Madison. And certainly, there are those on the council and in city government who hasten to do so at every opportunity. That's absurd. This police department does not need further protection. It's a fortress already. O I R noted again and again that M P D is closed to input from any and every source except those who offer uncritical support. They described a department that, in the face of any comment by an outsider, circles the wagons, labels the commenter an enemy, and goes into a mode in which it defends to the hilt any action or practice under discussion. Apparently, M P D is noteworthy in this regard among police departments around the country. They do not fundamentally concede that anyone but the department itself has the right to question or attempt to hold it accountable for anything. It's analogous to the military, and the Constitution guarantees civilian control of the military for good reason. We need that in Madison, too. The monitor position and having it report to a community board are crucial if we're ever to hear the voices of the people who live in Madison and are ostensibly served by its police department. It's just a voice and a way to channel it. As you know, it has no enforcement capabilities of its own. Because this process has taken so many years, we've arrived at the final steps of implementation, ironically, at the same moment when policing is an urgent national issue. It seems that O I R's phone is ringing off the hook these days, as cities have realized they must reform their police departments, and they want expert advice on how to do that. We already have that. It's complete. Wisconsin is in the news, even internationally, because of Kenosha. It's unthinkable that in Madison, with its reputation for being the most progressive, even radical, part of the state, there are still attempts to thwart the implementation of the mechanism that would monitor its insular police department, hear what citizens have to say about what it does, and investigate serious complaints of harm when they arise. This is long past due. I've come to doubt that it'll be enough, but to refuse to do the right thing now would be inexcusable.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Aditya Pujadanzi.
I do not see anyone by that name.
Okay. Next, we have Larissa, no last name. Is there Larissa?
She had an old version of Zoom, so I had to promote her to panelist, and there she is.
Okay.
Hi, Larissa. Larissa, you may have a prompt on your screen. There you go.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, sorry. My audio works better without that. Okay, yeah, so I find it kind of funny, shameless, that some of these people are even questioning whether we need or not an oversight committee that has transparency and a true representation of our community members, especially those suffering firsthand the acts of violence and abuse from these police officers. It is really unacceptable that we have officers like Matt Kenny, for instance, in our police departments, who have killed not one, but two of our community humans here in Madison. It is unacceptable that we continue to fund hate and not resources or real help and protection for those that most need it. Our community continues to trust the fake words of politicians, mayors, Alders, and everyone who say they're with us as seeking justice, but their interactions, they're not. We must bring the community's concerns to the table when even thinking of getting the next person in charge in office, because the community is hurt. We have been neglected and screaming for justice now more than ever. It's obvious that the use of force is not always necessary, but it's more obvious how our officers need training from those more educated, like social workers, doctors, psychiatrists, and people with personal experience. Those most affected by police brutality should be the first kind of people to get in this board, like Brian mentioned before. In Madison, Black people makes up almost 40% of those incarcerated, but yet they are only 50% and not even just about the population. And you know, this is about human rights. This is about bringing the change that people have been screaming for and change that people have been burning things for. There's people in the community who ain't even looking up to get paid. They only want justice. Maybe money shouldn't be involved if it creates such a root of evil. We got to do better. We got to do better for our people. The world is watching. No one is happy with the stuff happening in Wisconsin lately, so I ask you to please do the right thing, to do your job, to make sure the community has a voice, that personal experiences are something that we prioritize in this committee, because we're committed to take your seat if you can do the right thing. We demand that you prioritize and that you stop brutalizing those that are hurting and screaming the most for justice, because we have got enough. And we definitely need the community members to be in this committee and make it work for the people and by the people. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then finally, for item four, we have Shadara Kilfoy Flores.
There's no one here by that name, but we do have one later registrant, Amelia Royko Mar.
Okay. Hello.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, thank you. I just wanted to echo what everyone has said before me here. I know it's a broken record for some of you. I have to tell you, I never thought I would say this about the Madison Common Council, but for some of you, in trying to communicate and give all the metaphors as to why it is necessary to have this civilian oversight board and internal monitor written as-is, to, again, Alder McKinney, respect the integrity of the work of the ad hoc committee, as you have repeatedly said. I mean, experts across the country, right here on the ground in our grassroots organizations, the people that were hired to come and review the police department, who had compliments and also critique, which I know is just, Chief Koval just set a precedent for this inability to take critique. It's just, it's almost embarrassing. We're grown people. We have to be open to blame if we're going to be open to praise. That's what being an adult is about, and that's what working is about. I mean, have you ever critiqued a doctor? You have? Well, don't go to doctors anymore, because you don't know what it's like to be a doctor. I mean, how ridiculous is that logic? It's absurd. Now, we all know this process has been through just so many screens, and it could be the most meaningful civilian oversight mechanism in the country. Everybody's role will be recorded in this whole process. And really, I'm asking those in opposition, consider the company you're currently keeping. Consider the company. Unbelievable. Please, support this as-is. No amendments. Nobody needs to be a hero here. This was a group effort. Please pass it as-is. Alder Bedar, Alder Moreland, and Alder Kemble did a wonderful job. Again, so inclusive and so fair, just like the ad hoc committee. Nothing behind closed doors like the mayor and Cam McClay and the chief when they eviscerated the internal monitor. Enough games. It sure makes M P D look guilty, and I resent them putting some of you in the hot seat. For real. The last thing I want to say is, I never thought that approaching some of you on this subject would feel like calling Ron Johnson and having to explain to him why he shouldn't put kids in cages. You know, he just ignores it. He doesn't care. He doesn't care if thousands of people call him up. He just doesn't care. He's listening to the tune of the devil. So I'm asking you, Alders, if the police had you in the hot seat and they wanted to put kids in cages, would you do it and ignore all your constituents? Or if you had constituents who wanted you to do that, would you listen to them? Sometimes you just have to do the right thing. You know this is the right thing. And I talked to a captain today who said he has no problem with the way this is right now, none at all. They've got nothing to hide. So please, everybody, support these mechanisms as-is. Thank you so much.
So that's it for item four. Council President, do you want to go through the speakers for item five, or do you want to dispose of item four first?
No, let's wait. Thank you for everyone who registered and voiced their opinion. We already have a motion. And Alder McKinney, can you give me a second?
She raised her hand.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. For the purpose of discussion. Hold on, Alder Bedar.
Thank you, President Carter. So this is really the report of the work of the committee, so I would hope that we can dispose of it quickly. I don't think there should be any controversy on us reporting on the work we did.
Thank you. Alder Abas.
Thank you very much. I hope that's the right time to ask that question, and the question is for might be Attorney Office of Finance. So I saw there is a $100, I don't know, it's a stipend or a hundred bucks will be written in the ordinance for the oversight board. I just want to know, either that's kind of like per meeting, $100, or it's kind of like per month? Might be I misreading something, so could you please provide some clarity about compensation? Thank you.
Attorney Haas, do you have your hand up so I can see it? Well, that's okay. There you go.
Thanks. I'm looking at the ordinance itself does not set the amount of compensation. I'm looking at the report.
It's $100 per month, per member.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Yes, a question of clarification for Attorney Haas. Mike, could you reiterate if by approving, let me rephrase this, an affirmative vote on this would accept the fact that the report was written and we're accepting it, or does it approve the recommendations of the report?
I was looking at the, I believe, what was the motion to adopt? Yeah, so the motion was to adopt, so that would...
That would mean that the council would be not only accepting the report but agreeing with the recommendations and to implement them.
Just for the record, based on that, I will not be voting to adopt this report, so I will be requesting a roll call.
Yes, I'd just like to, there's a significant conflict between Alder Bedar there and the attorney. Could be, get some clarification, Alder Bedar?
Alder Bedar.
So Attorney Haas may be correct, and so maybe what you want to do, and again, I'm not a voting member at this point of CCC, is to place this on the table and come back to it at the end of the other four, based on what Attorney Haas is saying. I'm trying to move you along.
You know, the verbiage or the answer I gave was based on ordinance 2.27, which has to do with council actions on solitary reports, which are reports which are not accompanied by legislation, but I assume that the same, you know, the council has used the same term or meaning of the term "adopt." You know, if there's any clarification, if that's not the intent of the motion, then that can certainly be clarified. If the intent of the motion is only that it be accepted and not having those recommendations adopted, that can be clarified, but that's what is based in my response on.
Are there any other questions regarding adoption or accepting the report?
Alder Harrington McKinney has her hand up.
I got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm trying to frame this in terms of getting at my question. There are two pieces that I see, and I really do need to have this clarified, and so the one point is accepting the work of the ad hoc committee. It is also tied into, if we're accepting the work of the ad hoc committee, we're also accepting all of its recommendations that go with it. And so I need to be clear, I need to be clear in my mind, what are we doing? And so accepting the report is actually saying that we are accepting all of the components of the report, or accepting the report, because I thought that they would have been two different things, but I just want to clarify what I'd be voting on.
Attorney Haas?
Well, you know, because 2.27 talks about a report that is accompanied by legislation, rather than debating the terms, I think we should ask the maker of the motion what the intent is.
Alder Bedar or Alder Kimball? Oh, just one moment, Alder Bedar. Yeah, go ahead. Alder Abas, you'll be after Alder Bedar. Go ahead. Oh, thank you.
The question of the city attorney was posed to Alder Abas, so I yield it to Alder Abas.
Oh.
Thank you. My understanding was, and the motion I made was, to adopt, and after reading those recommendations to adopt the report as well as the recommendation. Thank you.
Do you mean that the council is accepting the recommendation, agreeing with the recommendations?
Yes, that's the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Alder Harrington McKinney, do you have a question? And Alder Bedar, do you have another comment? Because your hand is up. Okay, Alder McKinney? Okay, Alder, I mean, excuse me, Attorney Haas, I'm gonna elevate you or demote you, one of the two, I don't know which one it is. So by adopting this report, does that, how does that affect five and, I just want to get some clarification, five, six, and seven?
Well, there will obviously still be votes on those. The ordinances would not be affected unless they're adopted. There is one, you know, at least one difference I know between the ordinance and the report, which the work group clarified in the report, that it was recommending that the board, the Oversight Board membership include at least five members who are black, and that is not included in the ordinance. And so there is that conflict between the two, and so adopting a vote to adopt this report would mean the council releases committee is agreeing with that, with that recommendation, which would require an amendment to the ordinance. So to answer your question, I mean, five, six, and seven are really the implementation of this agenda item, of the report. You would still need to, the council would still need to pass those other items in order to create the position and to create the board and amend the operating budget.
Does anyone else have any questions on this before we go to a vote? I also see some things that are contradictory, would prefer to accept the report, but I'm not voting.
Alder Hennig has a question. A comment, has his hand up.
Okay, sorry. There you go, Alder Hennig.
Yes, so I have one comment, and it kind of goes along with Alder Abas's, is that as far as the stipend goes, stipends are something that we're talking about on a broader basis across all of our boards, commissions, and committees. Can I ask the question of why this is being brought forward for this committee before, right on the cusp of when we're going to be talking on a broader conversation around stipends within our boards, commissions, and committees?
Is that to Attorney Haas, or what?
That would be to one of the authors of the report.
Oh, okay. Alder Bedar and then Alder Kimball.
Thank you, Alder Hennig, for that question, because we have to start somewhere, and this is a particularly important oversight board with a very, very intense and an important set of obligations, that also has a clear representation of people who have often been marginalized and not been able to participate in our CD processes, which is exactly the conversation that has been had at TFOGS and with those recommendations. So this is, unfortunately, things are not sometimes sequential in the way that we would love them to be in our work. So this is before us now, before that conversation has been finished, and it was critically important for us, and we heard from people that it was critically important for participation of those who we feel are the most impacted people to be able to receive some level of stipend for the work that they're going to be doing on behalf of the residents of the city of Madison. And as you heard from the NACO people, we put things in there that are, I would hope that we would consider to be forward-looking and actually leave up the name of Progressive Madison by adding issues such as childcare and others, again, that have come up very clearly in the TFOGS recommendation, but we're taking this opportunity to put in practice.
Alder Kimball?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add to that, just underline the point about the sequence. We know this is an issue, we know this is good practice for inclusion and equity, and, you know, throughout TFOGS it came up, and we are doing this process now, it doesn't make sense to wait for a citywide policy on this to do it because of the reasons Alder Bedar mentioned, because of the nature of the board and who we're trying to recruit.
Okay, thank you, Alder Hennig.
Yes, thank you for those answers. I think I do find it important that when we're addressing a larger policy issue across the boards, commissions, and committees, that it's something we talk about and implement in at one point. I don't think that implementing on one before we've had the conversation on a broader scale allows us to have that conversation fully, because it's basically making the decision already. And at this point, I haven't heard enough or been able to see that it's something that we can implement on a broader scale, so it's not something that I can support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alder Hennig. I just have a quick question, and this is to the authors. Because of that discrepancy between the number of African-American slash black members, are you willing to amend the report? Because that, according to Attorney Haas, that is different from what you have in the other. So I just have that question, and just one moment, because we do have a question from Attorney, excuse me, Alder, I'm promoting or demoting everybody with these titles, but if you can hold on to that, maybe you can answer both questions at the same time. Alder Turney.
President Carter, actually, if either Alder Kimball or Alder Bedar would like to answer your question first, that'd be fine with me.
Okay, who would? Alder Kimball, go ahead, and afterwards, Alder Bedar.
I think what Attorney Haas would, was that the ordinance would have to be amended, not the report, and yes, I would be fine with that.
I would further like to, not that any of you would be surprised at me maybe disagreeing with the city attorney, but that recommendation is not within our main recommendation, it's in our concluding remarks as a strong recommendation to the council to do something about it. So I do not actually believe that adopting the report is adopting that recommendation in itself. It's a concluding remark, it's not part of our core recommendations. And it would, so that's my take on it, but I don't want to go any further into the weeds of what it is, but...
Again, I think that's an excellent point, but I guess I'm not sure what the intent of the maker of the motion is, whether or not those concluding remarks are intended to be adopted by the council as being implemented.
Alder Turney?
Thank you, President Carter. Yeah, it's something that during the course of this committee meeting, I know I received one email from a former ad hoc committee member, I think we all did, with concerns about the composition of the board members, what their experiences would be, et cetera. I know I also have had concerns, especially with the wording about the exclusion of who could be hired as the independent monitor or staff, or who could be appointed to the board, saying anybody that is related to a current or former member of the Madison Police Department. I'm not able to find that kind of language elsewhere in our state. I know entities like the State Elections Commission that require people to be nonpartisan, unbiased, even if somebody has had, for example, worked on partisan political campaigns or been a donor, there's the ability to step back away from that life and then go into working for that entity. I know there are some, I think some of the legislative nonpartisan agencies do require strict nonpartisanship, and I don't know if, I don't believe they will hire somebody that has had a partisan background. So I don't have any issues with saying, you know, not having a Madison police officer, current or retired, you know, I'd be willing to accept that, but the concern I have that I think I will try to address Tuesday night when we take these things up, is just the mentioning of, or the exclusion of somebody from a position because they're married to someone, or because they're a descendant of somebody that had worked on the police department. I am really a strong believer in the Wisconsin Fair Employment Act. I think it's a solid foundation. I think we actually need to build on it and strengthen it, and I just, I just don't, you know, understand why we would want to summarily not make somebody eligible for a position because of who they're married to, who their domestic partner is, et cetera. You know, I think that that person should have to go through an interview process, and, you know, if they can't demonstrate that they have the ability to be unbiased, well then certainly that would be something to consider, but I'm going to work on addressing that when the proposals are before council Tuesday. addressing that when, when the proposals are before council Tuesday night. Also during this conversation, I, I had a couple other phone calls with suggestions for amendments from people that absolutely definitely do want to see independent monitor and, and a board in place. I, I personally feel we need an independent monitor and a board. I have yet to talk to anybody in my district who does not feel that way. What people are concerned about are just the details. People don't want to delay it, people want to, want to get these mechanisms in place, but people have a right to express their opinions as to what the details are and, and when these proposals are either before this committee or before the full council, if they have concerns and a majority of our constituents have legitimate concerns, I, I think they do have a right to have their voices heard through an amendment process. And just, you know, this business of always bringing forward proposals and saying, do it without amendment, you know, I've seen that time and time again where I get a flood of emails saying, from people saying, you know, actually sometimes even threatening emails, saying, don't amend it. And then we end up finding, oh yeah, we have to amend it for one reason or another. So, you know, it's a difficult night for me tonight because I support a monitor, I support having that, that individual well-staffed, I support a board, but I also respect the diverse opinions of my constituents. And so I'm debating whether to just, you know, recognize that the real argument on this bill or on, on these bills, on these proposals is going to be on Tuesday night in the council or if I should, you know, it's, it's a little bit tricky how to cast my vote tonight, I, I have to admit, because I, I know over the weekend, a lot of people are probably going to actually see the details of these proposals for the first time because the news media is going to do stories and, you know, they'll, they have, perhaps haven't had the daily involvement a lot of other constituents of ours have had, and so they'll be seeing the details for the first time. And I imagine over the weekend, they'll probably say, well, wait a second, what about this, what about this? And, you know, so I guess it's fair to say I'm on the fence because tonight I'd love to vote for these things as a symbol that I, I do believe in the need for a monitor and a board and to have it well-staffed and well-resourced, respected by all the entities involved in our city, you know, but at the same time, I do realize that, I think there's a strong voice in my district to, to make what might seem like minor, but yet substantive changes on Tuesday night as well. So I guess that's what my, where my thoughts lie right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alda Henne and then Alder McKinney. You can unmute yourself.
Is it not unmuted? I'm unmuted.
You're unmuted now.
I'd just like to say thank you very much for those words, Alda Attorney. I think that you said that very well, I appreciate that and my, many of my residents feel the same way. I, I'd like to say thank you very much as well to the authors. I, I really appreciate the, the work put into this and, and I very much support actually the, the structure of, of how it's set up, of reporting, of how it reports back to the, the committee. I really appreciate the, the work you put in and the list of community organizations. And I guess my question resolves around to Alder Carter on, it talks about the selection process on September 29th. Could you, could you talk about that a little bit on how you're looking at conducting that?
Okay, the selection process and I'll have Alder Kimball talk about that more. It is my, Alder Kimball, it is my understanding that we will be reviewing applications that, I think I was cut off, that we will be reviewing applications that have been submitted because that night of the CCEC special meeting is just for reviewing applications for the oversight board. Alder Kimball, am I correct on that?
Yes, and I'd like to ask Karen, our staff member who has been working diligently on the details of that, to chime in and, and explain what she's been working on.
Okay, we'll get to Karen in two seconds, but basically that evening's meeting is just about reviewing the applications that have come in for the oversight board.
So it'll be, it'll be completely application based? Will we have any, any interviews or anything like that with applicants?
Karen, I've unmuted you.
Currently, we have not structured to, to include interviews.
Thank you.
Karen, can you just talk a little bit about the, the process and the, the sort of two different processes for nominations and then for the mayor and common council appointments? Yes. We're in the process of creating, finalizing, you know, creating documents pending council approval. There are two ways in which we will be receiving applications for CCEC, the council and mayor to make appointments. The nine designated, designated set of organizations, they'll each be submitting three nominations and then the CCEC, including the mayor, so CCEC plus mayor will be then deciding jointly, appointing one of each organization's three. And then there are four at-large positions, two to be appointed by a council and two to be appointed by the mayor, one of which is a, an alternate in each case. So one, one full voting, one alternate for the council, one full voting, one alternate for the mayor. And for that, as it stands in draft form now, what we are planning on doing is having a press release, release for, call for applications. Folks can self-nominate, organizations or anyone can nominate. We have an application process and a deadline and we'll be providing information on how to complete that and also posting it to the website, the council website, and more information will be forthcoming as we develop the final version of these materials. Alder Kimball, let me know what else you'd like me to say, get into. No, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney, Alda Henne. You're unmuted.
My question, thank you.
Alder McKinney and then, oh, and then Alder, and then Attorney Haas.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I'm going to start by just reading this brief, says, please share this widely. Alders McKinney and Skidmore are mobilizing opposition against police accountability. Please register in support of the following Common Council Executive Committee Agenda Items Four, Five, Six, Seven by tomorrow, Friday, August the 28th at 4:30 PM. These are the items we have to support for the independent monitor and civilian oversight board. You can register in support of Item Four, Five, Six and Seven here. You have to register for each agenda item, four registrations total needed, it takes four minutes. I read that because it is absolutely not true that I don't believe in police reform. I went back and read, and thank you for sending that, I think Greg sent it, I went back and read the complete somewhat dedicated police report for the shooting of Paul Henning. I went back and I read that. So when they said that, no, we've not done their homework, that is absolutely not true. The reason that it was important for me to get a broad understanding is, is that I have been consistent and I have not supported this. I'm not going to support it tonight because when you tell me that I cannot ask questions, that I must accept this as written, when there are absolutely questions that arise from me, makes me feel a bit uncomfortable. It is not my intent and even though, and I went back and read even Sherry Maples' comments about the relationship and I was one of the early people that drove from the west side down to the church on the east side as this organization was being formed. And so to be malign here, I mean, I can take anything, but I just want to call it out because it's not a vigilante, a, a committee. We have the right, because we are elected officials, to ask those questions and if we're not asking those questions and we're voting just because of pressure, that makes me very uncomfortable. We spent almost three and a half hours debating whether we would spend $60,000 for the merchants downtown. We're maligned against that. And now we are saying, don't ask questions about the commitment that the city is getting ready to make. That's out of alignment for me, I'm uncomfortable with that. So let me very, be very, very clear because that clarity was not made. What I said was, is that when the ad hoc committee makes their report, I want to make sure that there is transparency in the work that they've done, but it has been malign to say that I, I and Alder Skidmore, I can speak for myself, I can't speak for Alder Skidmore, are mobilizing opposition against. If I were mobilizing opposition against accountability, I certainly would have failed because those registered voters, I mean, those registered tonight were in support, in support, so I've really failed if that was my intent. I absolutely know that police reform is necessary. I absolutely believe that. I absolutely also know that, and I even went back and read some of the notes from earlier that Sherry Maples made. I also heard tonight is, is that it is important to have an independent monitor, independent to do their work. I fully support that. It is very important to have an independent monitor. I fully support that, but it is in the details and I am challenged by some of those details and I will not be supported and those details are structure, the selection process for the selection of the oversight committee, implementation and transparency. Those are questions that we, we are responsible for federing out because the one thing I walk away with is, is that to have an oversight committee that is not effective is not what we want. You're absolutely correct. To have an independent monitor that is not effective is not what we want. That is very clear. To not respect the work that the ad hoc committee over that four-year period, to not respect that, that's not what we want. To not respect the work that the three-member ad hoc committee did, I applaud the work that they put through just to get us to that point and to say that I don't respect that is not true, but I have the, I, it's my responsibility to ask those questions, whether they be popular or not. That's what the independent monitor will be, do, is, is that to ask those questions that are not popular, right? I'm not running a popularity contest, but I absolutely will ask questions and if it's not where I can get the answer to, I can't say yes. And anyone knows me, once I understand it and I get those answers, I am 210% on board. But tonight, I am not on board because it is also asking me to accept the report and the recommendations that go along with it and tonight I am just not there. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Haas?
Thank you. I just wanted to correct what I said earlier, I apologize, the recommendation was, I, I think I stated that the recommendation was that at least five members be black, it's actually that the oversight board be composed of at least 50% black members and that actually is a recommendation, recommendation number nine in the report.
Thank you. Attorney Skid, Alder Skidmore, sorry. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you and I appreciate Alder McKinney's comments and while I may not agree with everything and she said that she did not speak for me, I think we have similar concerns, I'll be very clear, and unless you live under a rock, you realize what my position has been from the very beginning. I supported the OIR report, but I did not support the findings of the ad hoc committee and I was consistent on that, I've been consistent throughout. I have serious problems with this report, I have serious problems with the recommendations and I am aware of the opposition to my position and how the troops are being mustered, I get the emails as well, the ones even I'm not meant to get and I can accept that, but I will not stop speaking up and asking questions, I'm reflecting the interests and the wishes of my constituents and I also firmly believe that the police department is working in the best interest of the public. I do not agree with many of the allegations that they're systemically racist and, you know, if you don't agree, so be it, but I will continue with my effort, I'm not done yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Alda Henne? And Alder Bedar?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to add one other thing that I thought was really important in, in the, in Nikko's presentation and that was how they talked about a starting point and that was something that I think made a lot of sense and I think I would like to, to see implemented in this report is, you know, where, where do we start with this? Where does the work start as far as what, what the oversight committee will be looking at?
Okay, thank you. Alder Bedar, then Attorney Haas and then Alder McKinney. Go ahead, Alder Bedar. There you go.
Thank you, President Carter. So I, I, I'm going to just kind of speak a little bit of, of my feelings and, and truth at this time. I feel like if the CCEC does not feel that it is worth having another five hours of debate on this floor to then bring the, the full debate to the council, then you should do everybody who is really actually in pain and hurting, which is our black and brown communities, some of whom have taken the additional emotional burden to log in tonight and to speak to us and save everybody, everybody truly, the additional burden of sitting through this for five hours and let people come and speak at the council meeting and let's have a full debate then. I do not think it is, we, we are, we're not showing true compassion, leadership and, and understanding of the amount of, of pain and emotional drain that this week has had on people by doing this on this Friday evening and then deciding that. Friday evening and then deciding that really we're kicking it to the council. So I'm just going to put that out there. And again, this is up to you to decide, a member of CCEC, on what motions you want to do. But please, please be mindful, be cognizant of when we're saying it's difficult and we're hurting, who is hurting most and who is really at the center of what the voices that we should really be centering our work, discussion, and the time and emotions that we are displaying. So please do that. Last but unleast, I would say that the, the work that the Alder Work Group did was diligently around the recommendations of the ad hoc committee, and we stuck to it as close as we could. If you disagreed from the beginning with the ad hoc committee report, be it. Disagree with this because you just didn't want this to happen. And if you have questions, then ask the questions. Do not say that because you don't have an opportunity to ask the question, then you're not going to support it. Let's ask the questions and let's ask, let's seek answers to those questions openly and in, you know, with listening minds. But I certainly have not received a single call by people saying that they had questions, that not, they have questions. So, and the last piece that I want to say is, the many people that email us are the residents of our city. They have the right to organize and they have the right to be able to mobilize themselves. That is actually how democracy works. That is how we're mobilizing people to go out and vote. This is how we're mobilizing people to respond to census. So this is, this is what this country is about. It's about people mobilizing other people to express their opinions and to email their elected officials. And so let's not dismiss the fact, the voices of mobilizers. That is what they do, and that's how representative democracy works. So all of that to say at the end, please, let's not spend five hours here if we want to have this debate fully with all 20 Alders on the council floor.
Let me just say, thank you, Alder Bedar, but let me just say that each and every one of us has to vote true to ourselves. And that's what we do every day. And that's what we do at every, every common council meeting and CCE meeting, and that's what we do at our boards and commission. Sometimes it goes opposite of someone else. We all realize that. But every one of us has to be true to ourselves when we vote. And I just want to jump over to, I'll be right with you, Alder. Harrington McKinney, I'm jumping over to-
No, I'm down, no.
You're down.
Right.
Okay, I'm jumping over to Attorney Haas. I saw your hand up. Are you down too? Everybody's hands up, but they're down. Okay. So the motion is, was properly second. Motion was moved in second. We're going to, is there a request for a roll call? Because I heard roll call, but I don't know who asked for a roll call.
Alder Skidmore is standing up.
Alder Skidmore.
Madam Chair, I requested a roll call.
Okay, thank you. Quazy, can you do the roll?
Yes. Aldo Abass.
Sorry, aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
Alder Skidmore.
No.
Alder Henne.
Aye.
Alder Tierney.
Aye.
Alder Campbell.
Aye.
You have guys in three nays.
I didn't hear you, Quazy.
We have three ayes and three nays.
Motion fails. Let's go to item five.
We have some registrants. I will go through the list of those who don't want to speak but are available to answer questions, and then I will call out the ones who are wanting to speak. We have Jennifer Rubin in support, available to answer questions. Ian Doyle Olsen in support, available to answer questions. Elizabeth Brunner opposes, available to answer questions. Daniel Gray opposes, available to answer questions. Megan Peoples in support, available to answer questions. Addie Hopes in support, available to answer questions. Annalise Parker in support, available to answer questions. Yativa Robles in support, available to answer questions. Mary Lee Pickett opposes, available to answer questions. Forgive me if I mispronounced this name. Remenel Kyle in support, available to answer questions. Mason Johnson in support, available to answer questions. Suzanne France Boswell in support, available to answer questions. Zachary Shay in support, available to answer questions. Luke Geister Jones in support, available to answer questions. Andrew D. Francis in support, available to answer questions. Deepak Unasikran in support, available to answer questions. We have Deepak registered twice. Heather Cushing in support, available to answer questions. Blair Feltham in support, available to answer questions. Ella Quentin in support, available to answer questions. Anastasia Hansen in support, available to answer questions. Tannen Scriver in support, available to answer questions. Seth Hecox in support, available to answer questions. Greg Galumbiak in support, available to answer questions. Deborah Elsas in support, available to answer questions. Thomas Kuzulanas in support, available to answer questions. Elizabeth Holden in support, available to answer questions. Kathleen Seendan Thomas in support, available to answer questions. Casey Lomensky in support, available to answer questions. Abravinya in support, available to answer questions. DJ Hogan in support, available to answer questions. Madeline Rock in support, available to answer questions. John Ringan in support, available to answer questions. Jacob Winkler in support, available to answer questions. Natalie Meyer in support, available to answer questions. Chris Judkins Fisher in support, available, oh, I'm sorry. Now I'm going into people who don't want to speak. So now I will go through the list of people who are available to speak on item five, starting with Kelsey Allen, who's in support and would like to speak. Kelsey Allen still with us?
Can you hold for just two seconds? Alder Campbell? Your hand is up.
I was going to move that we take the next three items up together and then get all the public comment on them together. I don't know if that motion is still, would be in order. Since they're all, all of those three items are linked together.
I understand. Do we have a second? And we might need to schedule another meeting.
Second.
Before the first. Thank you. It's been moved in second. Is all in favor? I will record a unanimous, just one moment. Alder Henne.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we're taking the public comment up, but that we'll still be able to take each individual items up separately.
Yes.
No?
No, my motion is to take each three, all the three items together in light of what Alder Bedar just said, comments, and the fact that it's, we're pushing four hours here and that we will be debating this fully in, in council. If we take them all up together, we can talk about any aspect of each of them, and then we'll vote on them as three together. That would, that is what was moved and seconded. And also that the public comment from the, all three items would be taken right now.
Attorney Haas, otherwise I am looking at scheduling a meeting for Monday night. Where's Attorney Haas at? I lost him. Oh, there you are.
Thank you. Just to add, as far as an option, under the motion, if the body decided after all the discussion that it wanted to have separate votes, it could have a motion to separate the questions after it, but this would allow all the comment and discussion to take place together?
No, I'd be in favor.
Okay, so with that caveat, I would like to record a unanimous vote. Attorney Haas, your hand is still up. Are you? Oh, okay. I would like to record a unanimous vote with Alder Skidmore.
To clarify, you're requesting a unanimous vote to approve all three items?
No, to have public discussion.
Thank you.
To take up all the items simultaneously.
Oh, Quazy, what did you say?
I was just clarifying that it's to take up all the remaining items simultaneously.
Alder Skidmore, are you opposing a unanimous vote?
I will not oppose a unanimous vote to take up all three items together. I will, I will not be, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Okay, so if there are no more discussion, I will record a unanimous vote.
So starting with item five, and then I'll go through the subsequent items. We have Kelsey Allen in support and wanting to speak, and she's still available.
Do not see anyone by that name?
Okay, Kevin O'Malley in support, wanting to speak?
Yes, thank you. So I, I appreciate the time and on the call for a few hours here. I appreciate the discussion brought forth by Alder McKinney and the response by Alder Bedar. I'm speaking in support of all four elements of this ordinance as proposed. And by way of background, Alder McKinney, you mentioned the Paul Heenan incident. I was the witness. So if you just read that report, you know my name. That was eight years ago. So the confusion around the urgency here to take action when it's in front of us is hard for me to believe, especially if you have just read that report. There is a sense of urgency here, and it's an urgency that I felt as a witness to an officer-involved murder. And it's an urgency I felt as I went through that process and saw from a unique perspective, the way in which police officers far too often are acquitted without, without proper independence and oversight. In the Steven Hyman's case, as is so often the case with officer involved murders, he was, that was found justifiable. Months later, a 58-page complaint was brought forth by Chief Noble Ray to the Police and Fire Commission, recommending the discharge of Hyman's. That report contained 118 violations of 13 different policies over a 15-year career. Most of those violations had to do with highly disturbing, rageful comments that Hyman's made using the messaging system within his squad car. Many of them were also related to excessive use of force complaints. It is my belief that civilian oversight and independent monitoring would have looked at these policy violations over that 15-year career in a way that's very different than how the Madison Police Department and the existing system looked at that. I believe Paul Heenan would still be alive if genuine and independent oversight were in place, and if Steven Hyman's had been discharged long before his rage exploded on that night in November of 2012. If independent oversight were in place, Matt Kenny wouldn't be on a police horse at a protest either. I remain appalled still at the fact that Steven Hyman's rage wasn't cause enough for him to be fired. Instead, it was those 118 violations that led to his resignation. But in a recent review of MPD excessive force complaints, we know that one of 166 excessive force complaints was sustained. That is 13.3 times lower than the average sustained rate across US police departments. So we know that if a resident of Madison complains of excessive force, MPD will almost always clear the officer. Oversight is necessary, and it's necessary now more than ever. I understand, Alder McKinney, the need to pose questions. Completely understand that. I hope you understand that the sense of urgency so many of us in the community feel at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, excuse me, one second. Allen Nolastain in support, wanting to speak?
I don't see anyone by that name.
Okay, Julia Matthews in support, wanting to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I've been present at the majority of Common Council Executive Committee and Common Council meetings since spring, just kind of like in the background. And I just wanted to say, I find it interesting that very often there's a lot of time spent talking about the need for discussion and ask questions when that same time could be taken asking the questions. And I also find it interesting to see so much justification for why people are voting no tonight when there have been months to ask these questions and resolve these issues with the legislation as it has been written by the ad hoc committee. Why are these issues only being brought up now if this action is so important to your values, especially given the current social political moment? Again, I just want to voice support for the hard work put in by everyone throughout this process and emphasize how long overdue this legislation is. Last, I want to mention that the budget set out for this board is only half the 1%, noted as like a normal budget for this kind of work earlier in the meeting. And so it shouldn't be hard to find in the MPD budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gisella Wilson.
Yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to reiterate the point, basically that was just stated, and add my voice to it. Nobody's saying, don't ask questions, but the people asking questions tonight have had years to ask those questions if their values were in keeping with police reform. And I, I, I just don't understand why you, some of you, when you say police reform, turn to the police instead of the people that are being hurt by the police. I just don't understand it. And I strongly support these measures. These measures are a function of eight years of careful work and careful consideration and negotiation with the MPD. So their voices are taken into account. They're the ones that wield the power. The PFC is the one that wields the power ultimately. All we're asking here is a voice. Thanks.
Next, we have Tyson Vitale.
Is Tyson Vitale still with us?
Oh, can you hear me now? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Wow, where do I start? First off, Barbara, hi, Tyson here, Vitale, I sent out some of those things, and I want to say, prove us wrong. I would be so happy for you to be able to recommend me and say that I misjudged and I am completely wrong. I am completely wrong, that you are, we, we intend, we intend you to derail this. I really, really do. Please prove me wrong. I sincerely ask you to do that. But unfortunately, you did not. If you have questions, Barbara, ask the questions. Do you know how accessible this process has been?
Tyson.
No, you cannot. I have three minutes. I'm sorry, you can speak after me.
You do have three minutes, but can you address the...
I, can I finish my three minutes, please?
And not just one member, please?
I, I'm gonna do what I want right now in this moment as a citizen, and I'm not gonna prioritize towards you, I'm gonna prioritize my community and our community. So, I'm gonna continue, thank you. Um, this process has been getting better incredibly, incredibly accessible. I have to really, really give it to these others who frankly probably got really annoyed with me of how many questions I was asking, other folks were asking, folks that sincerely want this, and you know that we do. And the reason why we have been advocating for these things and saying that people are gonna vote no on these recommendations, literally just like you did, is because we care about oversight of the police. We know how it affects our community, we care about our community. Don't, we don't care about, quite frankly, stop centering yourself. It is, it is disgusting what I'm seeing right now, in this very moment, where we have a man get shot seven times, leading to unrest in our society right now, and this is how we are dealing with this issue? How is that leadership? Shameful. You better improve us wrong, 'cause you are not. Care about our community, not yourself. It's unacceptable. If not now, then when? If not now, then when? What message are you sending to the youth in the streets that fear for their lives every day and they'll damn well that their lives aren't valued, because we don't? Because any police officer that is problematic can shoot them and get away with it, right now as we speak. And you're allowing that, and that is not acceptable. Shame on you. Shame on you. And then you call out us that are the burden of dealing with you, not actually doing your work and asking the questions that you say you want to ask. Ask them. I beg of you to ask them. If you are truly for this and ask the questions, then you will get to the same conclusion as us. If you are not, then say you are not. It is not okay anymore to do performative actions that, that do nothing but just state things. We need to actually make substantial change in our community, and it is not acceptable to do otherwise. It is not acceptable. Shame on you. Please, do better. And I have faith that you will, 'cause we have to have hope and faith that you will, 'cause what else is there, right?
Thank you so much. Next, we have Elias Sarofsky in support.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, thank you to the Ad-Hoc Committee for all their work and calling for the high level of police accountability in the city of Madison. Uh, my name is Elias Sarofsky. Um, I'm the current Vice President of the Campus Area Neighborhood Association. At the Campus Area Neighborhood Association, we've been actually very fortunate to sit down with our community officers and talk about the issues of, uh, police accountability and buil- building relationship with those whose job it is to keep us safe, and they have actually been very supportive of police accountability in Madison. Um, I want to voice my support for the proposed funding and ordinances that establish the Police Civilian Oversight Board and the Office of the Independent Police Officer for three reasons. Um, one, it takes steps to bring communities most affected by police violence in Madison to the table, allowing for the most marginalized to oversee those who police their communities. Two, by allowing for the community to investigate violations of the standard operating procedures of the Madison Police Department, this may actually foster trust in Madison Police Department investigations and be used to bring proper justice to those in our community that have been harmed by police violence. And three, I think this is necessary, and frankly, the bare minimum, to empower all of our community members. There's a lot that can be done. It is necessary because currently, the Madison Police Department's standard, um, operating procedures allow for the use of chemical weapons like tear gas, which have gassed my friends out of their apartments while they were sleeping. Also, the Madison SOPs allow for no-knock warrants, a policy that has been allowed, um, in other parts of the country and led to the murder of people like Breonna Taylor. May she get her justice. Furthermore, the Madison Police Department standard of operations, uh, use of deadly force policy excuses a verbal warming if there's reasonably possible, um, stuff to occur, which, uh, sort of unsettles me in, in the case of an unarmed civilian. Um, so, therefore, we need the Oversight Board, we need a monitor as proposed to ensure that it is not only the MPD and the supervisors that are conducting investigations, but it also is the community members that have a stake in how their community is being policed. Um, all in all, I think this is the bare minimum the city should be doing for our most marginalized members of our community. I implore the community to vote yes and establish the Office of the Police Monitor and the Police Civilian Oversight Board. Um, I urge members to continue to reform the Madison Police Budget and policies to move towards principles of community control. Um, and lastly, let us not forget that a budget is a moral statement. I yield my time.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have William LaFrance.
Hello, everyone. Mic check? Can you hear me?
If you could.
Okay. Uh, Madam President, Executive Committee, thank you for having me. Uh, I want to start by apologizing for the conduct of some other speakers who had plenty of time to compose a message to communicate their frustration productively, but instead came with raised voices. I wish the mayor would have found herself in attendance for a discussion of such important issues. This year, I'm proud to have called Madison my home for a decade now, and I'm proud to vote never the election. This is my first time ever addressing the council. Uh, for most of my time here, I've been impressed with the Madison Police Department. I used to live right across McKenna from Elver Park, and on the Fourth of July, I actually looked forward to having the mounted police on my street. During a protest against police brutality on May 30th, Madison Police took the focus off of Minneapolis and made the event about them, ruining their great reputation overnight. MPD used the robbery of Goodman's as an excuse to clear the entirety of State Street and use gross amounts of pepper spray on nonviolent protesters who had a constitutionally protected right to be there, which was rumored to be the entire supply of CS and OC the department had on hand that evening. I wanted to better understand what happened and the policies that allowed it. So, on June 5th, I sent MPD a public records request for all statements related to the use of force at this event and a list of all personnel deployed at this event, along with other records. I've exchanged 12 emails now with MPD's records custodian, and as of this week, she refuses to provide a date for when I can expect a full set of statements and list of personnel as required under MGO 3.70, simply stating that I need to wait for the case event port- the case, sorry, excuse me, the event case report to be completed, offering no estimate for when this will be completed. Best I can tell, the records custodian is not in compliance with our city's laws. I may or may not ever receive these re- these reports, and certainly not when they're timely and relevant. My point as it relates to this agenda item is that as a private citizen, I have no clear recourse if the police choose not to comply with MGO 3.70. Should I contact the city attorney or hire a private attorney at great personal expense? Exactly how far should I have to go to gain access to these public records so that I can verify that MPD is following the law and their policies? As Alder Harrington McKinney asked earlier, "Where does the buck stop?" The citizens of Madison need to have confidence that their police are using force only when authorized and necessary. Given they've demonstrated their inability to self-monitor or even comply with existing oversight ordinances, it is time for an external civilian review of all use of force to become the default, not just an ad hoc citizen reaction to outrageous behavior. I reminded of our retired Chief Koval's parting words less than a year ago, quote, "Blame me for whatever missteps or disappointments you may have, but please give this department and its dedicated employees the benefit of the doubt. Let them impress you with their selfless desire to better serve you," unquote. I read these words when he resigned, and I believe that he meant them. I hope that through oversight, MPD can earn its reputation back. Thank you for taking this step to make Madison safe again for those of us who wish to air grievances with our government. This is what democracy looks like. I request that the city attorney would take action to ensure that MGO 3.70 is complied with. If you're willing to look into this, Mr. City Attorney, I'm happy to email you with more information. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Laura Christina Valderrama.
There's no one here by that name?
Okay. We have next, Deb Rogers in support, wanting to speak?
I, what? Hello?
Oh, sorry about that. Yes, please.
Okay. I thought I had... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I thought I had said all that I had to say before, but that's not true. Um, firstly, um, the email that, um, Alder McKinney read and characterized as maligning, um, I, I really, that was not maligning, that was accountability. And that's what accountability looks like. It seems to me, I don't have, you know, voting records at my fingertips here, but, um, the same people who've been opposed to this from the beginning and have voted against it over and over and over and over have voted against it again tonight. I don't see that there actually are any questions, there's just this implacable resistance to actually ever instituting anything like accountability, um, or transparency, none of which exist. Listening to those experts at the beginning of this, of this session, um, I, I just, I, it was stunning to me how far behind we are. You know, they start from the assumption that cities, of course, have mechanisms for citizens to make complaints and then find out what happens with them and, um, to, to, to get answers and, um, meaningful answers. Um, and we're, we're nowhere. We are nowhere with this. We are so far behind, it's laughable. And these proposals, for the most part, would establish the, the, just, just, I mean, this is square one. Um, and, and yet, the same people seem to feel the need to defend the police against us. We're not the enemy. Um, and we're just, you know, I'm, I'm someone who got involved in this because I heard the shots. I was awake. I heard, I heard those shots that killed Paul Heenan. And I, I started attending meetings and asking questions and found out that there is no accountability. And, um, I, I have to tell you, I'm a woman in, in my 60s, white. I've never been afraid of the police before, but I've been afraid of the police since I started learning about this police department. And I know that you would find a lot of other people in the same boat we've spoken up at meetings. Um, there's, there's a lot that's wrong with this department. And the fact that there's all this opposition to just establishing the basics, um, is devastating. Um, and I will be looking to get bigger press involved in covering this. That's all.
Three minutes? Thank you. Next, we have Adita Bugazendi.
There's no one here by that name?
Okay, next, we have Larissa No Last Name. Is Larissa still with us?
Yeah, just one moment.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, it's unacceptable, it is unacceptable that our voices are being shut down again by people in power, again, people that look like us. Uh, many people out here is doing the job that many are not doing, and they're being paid for. Pay for. And they make it the most impossible for the community not to participate, not to be able to be in these decisions that they're making with our lives. These are our lives. These are our children. This is our community that's being hurt. I don't get it. Like, I really don't get why, why is it so hard, like, to know that we have an important role in our communities? We need to let the community know what people is doing for our lives. What decisions are you making for our lives? Our sh- our voices have been shut again, and that is not acceptable. We have the right to let people know, they have the right to ask questions, but many people, many people, it's tired, many people doesn't even believe in the change that we are able to make because of how much we have let them down, how much we have let them die. It is not acceptable, it is not okay that we continue to not listen to the people that y'all work with. It is not okay to continue to let all these buildings burn just because people, it's hurting and not getting justice. Basic human rights justice. Like, it is not okay for people to shut us down. It is not okay, uh, for anyone to make decisions without us knowing, and not just not knowing, but like, you will also make it impossible to get into, uh, to be part of these items that are so important for our lives, that then we question, like, what could, what can we do now? Nothing, right? Because you almost made this private and, and hidden from everything on the last minute notice. We got, we got work to do, we got kids, we're about to go in to be like, uh, teachers at home, many of us, because we had kids. Like, y'all keep making decisions with our lives, y'all keep killing us, this is not okay. We need to have a voice in this, in these things. We need to have access, we need to have easy access on these decisions. It is not okay that we continue to get hurt like this. We're the community members, we're the breadwinners, we're the, the, the ones that keep the economy going, we're the ones that are helping you to continue to be in those seats. We ask you to please consider this really, really well and be part of the right side of the history. We, please ask you for your support on these items, because we have had enough. We really need some justice for our communities. We are hurting, we are crying, we are screaming for justice. I come from immigrant families, I come from undocumented family who has seen firsthand how ICE collaborates with this Madison Police Departments and all of the police departments, because there's no policies, there's no procedures, there's only words that doesn't mean nothing, because there's no actions behind those words. I ask you to please do the right thing, because we got a right to let the people know what you're doing. And we got a right to organize and to get our community together, because this is democracy. Please do the right thing. Again, I ask you for your support in this items, I am screaming for your support in this items, because it's well needed. Thank you so much.
Before we go to the next, um, speaker, um, Paul, can we go till nine o'clock?
There's no end time?
Okay, well, don't say that, Paul.
Not that I can enforce.
All right, next, we have Shadara Kilfoy Flores.
Uh, there is no one here by that name?
Okay, what about Fabio Moro Arrieta?
Fabio, you should have a, um, prompt on your screen to confirm you'd like to be unmuted to speak.
In support and wanting to speak?
I just am mute, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a, eh, I'm immigrant, I, I moved to, to US, eh, six years ago from Costa Rica. And, and I think it is amazing to, to hear this conversation, and we still need to think, and we haven't opened our eyes of how the world changed, eh, in the last, well, it's not that the world changed, it is that it now is so obvious that the, eh, eh, treat by the police to the community being recorded on video cameras over and over again, and we still have to debate this? That's, I cannot grasp how this is not a five-minute conversation and, uh, both unanimous on those type of things to begin, let alone have a real conversation of we as, as society members want to leave a world for our kids. We shouldn't be thinking of if we vote yes or no, we should be doing this as the first step towards a better society. How can we keep pouring or defunding year over year, school, school launches, school busing, infrastructure, not a peep? And now, and that money has been transferred to police enforcement year after year, total silence, the, the well disparities, disparities in this country, crazy number. silence, the well disparities in this country, crazy numbers. The Gini Index, the index that United Nations decided that measured disparity between the rich and the poor, now in this country is at levels of, I don't know, the maybe Chinese emperors, Roman Emperor Empire before it collapsed? And, and we are debating if we are gonna, analyzing the budget of law enforcement? It's, it's beyond understanding to me. We should be discussing if the cut should start at 50% or at 90%? Immediately transfer all that money towards a better health system, better education system, better, a better society, a better society? And then move on, start thinking, how can we improve upon that, not if we should do it or not? I don't stop being amazed, day after day, someone before, despite their opinion about the, I believe agrees with what I'm saying right now, still hopeful, I don't know if I'm hopeful, I don't know if I'm hopeful. I participated a couple of years ago in the, in the RAIL, the Yale conversations and despite that everyone speak against putting millions of dollars of the budget towards building a huge cage, a huge cage for human beings, you guys vote to build that jail? Unbelievable, unbelievable. Same thing with the videos, over and over again. And do we need proof that the, what type of training do we need to give them? It's not about training, they know how to act, they know how to act when white people is in front of them, they know how to act. They decided not to act properly when there is a black or a brown person in front of them.
Arieta, your three minutes is up unless the body wants to hear some more.
Well, yeah, well, thank you for listening and, and think about it, hopefully you can vote a humanistic way in this, in this, in this bill.
Next, we have Amelia Royco Mora.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I had something to say and then I listened to Kevin Tyson and the speakers after that and, and I, I guess I, what I want to convey is this. This whole process, because of how diligent community members have been in staying on top of it, sacrificing their income, their housing, their families, some lives, we see everything you're doing, okay? All of it. So when some of you say you, you haven't been able to answer questions or have your questions answered, I, it's unfathomable that that would be used as an excuse and that you would actually think that it will hold water. It's, it's so absurd. I mean, five years of time to go to meetings, participate. The report was passed last year, all that time to read this one recommendation, which the ordinance reflects almost to a T. And some of you sit here tonight suggesting that you just haven't had your, you don't understand it. Here's what I don't understand. I don't understand how whatever resentment exists there could continue to have you on this side of things, but most of all, to the white men voting against this and making this complicated, I just need you to know, the broken windows, those are on you. You prove that peaceful protest does not work because you do not meet any of the requests of the protesters when they're peaceful. The statues being dragged, they're dragged because they reflect your positions of complete lack of compassion for people of other identities who want to have equity and justice. That's on you. If not for you, Nate, it wouldn't require, sorry, we're in the car and almost just got hit by a car. If not for you, it wouldn't require dragging of statues to have a conversation about a statue of Phil Phillips. If not for you, it wouldn't require breaking of windows to have black youth up and down State Street making art, still getting harassed, that's on you too. That is on you. So you have, and I'm talking again to the white men who are voting against this.
Three minutes is up unless the body does want to extend something.
Can I extend it 30 more seconds? Am I, hello? Is that okay?
No.
We don't have consensus for you to extend it.
Next, we have Ankita Barawaj. Is Ankita still with us?
I believe that's one of the not wishing to speak available to answer questions.
Yeah, she sent me a message that she did want to speak, so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just want to say that we all know, well, at least I don't think we all know, but the system is broken. Black people and indigenous people are murdered every day and brown people and black people and indigenous people have fake exaggerated charges against them during protests. On that note, free Yeshua, free Sire and free Jesse, letting white men who attempted murder on black and brown, black and, black men and black women and not arresting white people who attempted murder is literally, I don't understand how that's playing out. Police is acting like Trump's own children and they have always been oppressing and the already oppressed. They're misguiding the ignorant into Messiahhood, they think that they're messiahs, they're not. I'm specifically mad that how we don't, do not talk about qualified immunity and how essentially it makes cops similar to gods, untouchable, unaccountable with superhuman powers. And this board and monetary position will help bring justice, but here we are having to debate if we should get it or not. Why are we doing this? There's centuries worth of oppression. And let me tell you very clearly, there is no diverse, diverse opinion, there are no diverse opinions, there are only oppressive opinions and uplifting opinions. And by the way, you all exist for us, we don't exist for you. I'm talking to all of you elders. And now we want to, we want to tell you how to do your jobs clearly because clearly you haven't been doing it so far. On that note, fire Matt Kenny and prosecute Matt Kenny. Please don't be a part of the problem, be a solution. And Matt Kenny, you're a class traitor, you exist for us, we don't exist for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will go on to item six, the first speaker. I will go through the speakers first and then I'll just list off the ones who are available to answer questions. Daniel Gray, who opposes and wants to speak, is Daniel Gray available?
He is not in the queue.
Okay. Next, we have Alan C. Robinson in support and wanting to speak.
I do not see that name either.
Julia Matthews in support, wanting to speak.
I am good, I yield my time.
Okay. Erin Boland?
I do not see that name.
Tyson Vitale? In support, wanting to speak.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I just want to thank again everyone who has kind of taken the time today, the hours today to kind of, you know, go through this unacceptable kind of just stuff that I just kind of heard here, you know, and I just want to speak really quick on Tony closing here. We have every right to be angry and to express that and to hold you all accountable to do the right thing to our community because this is literally life and death for people. And it is not okay to center yourself and that is why we're so angry because this should not be hard or difficult, you guys. Can we please do the right thing for our community, for our people and for the folks that are the most marginalized here that never, ever, ever have their voice heard? And for the folks who don't care, Skidmore, talking to you, this is a pragmatic decision, frankly. If we don't do this, listen to what Amelia just said, she is completely right, you do not understand the frustration and where people are at, they are saying enough is enough. And if you think things are going to get better and you expect things to get better and for unrest to stop without valuing the folks that you're telling to stop, that's not how it works. The things that we see are symptoms of oppression, they're symptoms of never being heard, never being valued in our community. Let's stop centering ourselves in this conversation and let's really value what we say we value. Madison, Wisconsin is one of the most recent cities in the United States and Dana shows that. It is one of the, has some of the worst racial disparities yet we pride ourselves in being this progressive bastion. No, we're not. What we're good at is gaslighting people of color and gaslighting folks, you know, for all these things, but they never actually value not to do them. Change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Deb Rogers.
Can I just ask a question, Quazy? If, if they are registered for all three, can they just talk once on all three since they're all together? Is Attorney Haas still with us? Maybe he can answer that.
Yeah, because we do have a lot of the same speakers on all.
Yeah.
There are few disparities though.
Attorney Haas, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, that is an option since there will be, all the items are being taken together, all of the discussion can be taken together for each person.
I think for the public, if they're registered for all three, they can talk on all three at one time.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Haas.
I believe our next speaker then is Deb Rogers, if she's still available.
Yeah, that's fine, but from that point forward. Go ahead, Deb. You're on mute.
Oh, sorry, I don't have anything more to say.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, is Adita Pugazendi still, still with us?
She is not.
Okay, Larissa, no last name? And if she's registered for all the other items, she can speak to all of us right now.
Is she registered?
Larissa, you might have.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, no, sorry, so for sure, I just want to continue to ask you for your support in this items that really matters for our communities. Many people are out here doing the work many people is not actually doing and getting paid for. So we really want you to bring justice to our communities because we continue to see them crying, hurting and doing all kinds of stuff that put them themselves in jeopardy and like, it's not even fair because we see the same people doing the same things and just because they're white, they don't get the same punishment and it's not right because people is hurt, they have mental trauma, they have mental abuse that we have been living through from all this systemic racism and institutional racism. I, I am from Milwaukee, I was raised right there and it's the most segregated city in the whole United States. I ask you to please do the right thing, you have the power to make change in history for the whole United States, for many people that went out of their way today to DC from Milwaukee, from Madison, to be there and be the voice that Martin Luther King would have liked to seen 70 years ago and say, we, we all have a dream, we want to live, we want to breathe and that's it, we just want to live and be able to breathe and we want to survive, we want to make sure that everyone is being treated the same and if we had to train the whole village, we are willing to do it at no cost, we're willing to do it, but we all need to do better. Thank you so much tonight for letting me speak, I really appreciate you all and I know you will do the right thing. Thank you.
Next, we have.
Hold on, Quazy, Alder Kimball, your hand is up.
Yeah, I appreciate.
Hold on, I can hardly hear you. Okay, go ahead.
So I think changing the rules of how we're allowing public comment in the middle of public comment is not really great practice and I think if people, I mean, people registered three and four times, they should be given three minutes on each item. So if, if we all, if we want to say, okay, there's two items left and you're signed up for both, we should give them the six minutes for those both items and not, not cut people off in the middle.
Attorney Haas, what is your opinion on that?
So, you know, my observation is when that has been the practice for most committees when they're taking comment on more than one agenda item at a time is that they allow additional time. I think it's varied, I don't know if it's always, you know, completely double, but I, I, I guess I would tend to agree if they're speaking on more than one item that they should have more than the three minutes. I don't know how that goes for who's left on the list and how many different items they're speaking on, but I, I think ultimately that's up to the body.
Maybe I should let the body know that there's only one more speaker for item six and then the remainder of the speakers would be for item seven.
Right. But we have, we actually have Shadera, who I'm not sure if she's still on there, but Amelia and Ankita is registered for all items as well, so. Ankita. So if Amelia is on and wants to use the rest of her time to say her comments on both items.
I see after Larissa, there's Shadera, who's not here, and then Amelia Royco Mora.
Yeah, and Ankita also in her message said she registered for all items, so I'm not sure if there was a mistake in her registration, but she can speak too.
Should I call on Amelia here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello? Where was I? All right, just need to remember where I was.
This is on, what item is this on?
Well, this is for six and seven.
Number seven.
Okay. No, I'm still focused on the white men that are voting against this. So whether it's four, five, six or seven, what I was trying to convey is that my cousin, Jordan King, was arrested the other night during protest. He's been leading peaceful protests since 2015. After he came home from fulfilling his dream out in Colorado to become a professional ski jumper, something he had saved money for since he was 16 years old, he came home and Tony Robinson was killed, sorry, Tony Robinson was murdered. And Jordan started out as an All Lives Matter protester because his mom's white, because he believes that white people care and he believed the police cared, he really did. And so he's been peacefully protesting for five years and you guys have taught him. And so he's been peacefully protesting for five years and you guys have taught him that it doesn't go anywhere. And when you quote MLK and you talk about peaceful protesting, you forget about the letters from Birmingham jail. That justice delayed is justice denied. And you forget that those weren't peaceful protests because people were getting beaten and murdered. And they were told to just take it and keep pushing forward, but don't fight back. Those days are over and you can understand why. It's about survival. It's about living with equity and justice. Jordan works as much as he can to support his four children and his partner in a home that they live in that by now they should own. That would be an equitable and just world, but instead he's been spending five years on the street peacefully protesting to people who don't listen. And the folks who lead that charge tend to be white men. Now, I live with one and he's wonderful. He gets it. He's all for equity and justice. You guys choose not to get it because there's no possible way you could have gotten elected and be that dim. You are doing this willfully. So every window that breaks and every statue that gets dragged and all the unrest, it is on you. And understand moving forward, that is going to be the case and that is how people will see it. I'm no longer trying to convince you. I don't know if you've noticed, but you make it really hard for black, indigenous, and people of color who want to gain ground in the political world and in this world altogether to vote in their best interest. That's on you. So let that sit with you and it's going to be my mantra until you decide that protesting peacefully is actually worthwhile. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Paul, is Ankita available? Is she, is she still on? She can speak to the last two items?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm here. Thank you for, um, giving me the opportunity again. I just want to say that the last time I was speaking, which was literally right before this, I was muted while I was speaking. I have no clue why that was done. And I, I just want to say.
Right.
Okay, but I just want to say that that was not encouraging at all for me to speak again. I was actually going to log out, but I decided to stay on. I just want to say that you all need to make a conscious effort to let the public, the people that elected you and put you in positions of power, you need to let these people express their justified anger. Justified because we are oppressed, we're asking for changes. You all keep forcing MLK, Mahatma Gandhi and all these like good trouble stuff onto us. But when we do that, as Amelia said, it doesn't work. So I want you to all understand that it's time for you to let us talk and not mute us and not talk over us and not tell us how to exercise our First Amendment rights when all I have seen for a long time is a lot of you either kind of diverse the topic, dug down questions, escape accountability, refuse to answer questions, or say that you're ans- you are asking questions and you're not being answered. Please don't do that. I have lost hope, but I'm still going to keep on coming and talking. And it's high time you understand that this is a very important decision that you have to take. And if it means that I need to attract more public attention to what you are doing, then I will make it my life's mission to do that and hold you all accountable on how you vote. And I hope that every single vote is roll call votes I can see, so we can see how you're voting. Thanks.
Thank you. So for item seven, um, the new names that I recognize on here, Paul, is Annalise Carlia with us?
No.
What about Hannah R. McIntosh?
No.
What about Douglas Endrizi?
No.
Okay, um, all the other speakers have been the same from the previous items.
Are we done with public comment?
Yes, and what I will do, the, the, um, there's a list of individuals available, ready to answer questions, but not willing to speak. Any advice on how, if you want to hear their names or if you just want your name submitted for the record is what is the will of the body.
Is it the same list that you, that you read earlier?
Mostly yes, correct. There's a lot of overlap on the, on the list.
Okay. So now that we've done with public comment, can I get a motion for?
Alda Kimball has her hand raised.
I see it. I'm trying to get to it. I think you can, I've done it twice.
Move adoption of, of items five, six, and seven?
I'd like to separate.
Okay. So, um, we, do we have a second on Alder Kimball's motion?
Second.
Okay. If there's no objection, Alder Hennick?
Yes, I was just saying I'd like to separate.
Okay. Attorney Haas, can you tell me at this point, where are you? There you are. It's been asked to separate, so do we, do we go forward with that motion or did that motion fail when we had someone asked to separate?
So first you have a vote on the motion to separate, which is not debatable. And then if that motion passes, then you have individual votes on the, on each motion. If it fails, then you go ahead and take them all together.
Okay. So we have a motion to separate. Do we have a second? Alder Skidmore seconds? I would like to, um, it's been moved and seconded. I would like to record a unanimous vote. Alda Bedar?
I, um, I think I'm, um, I don't see Aldo Tureny since I'm the alternate. I guess I'm now a voting member of CCC and I, um, is he on?
No, I don't believe so. He, he had stated that he had to get off, so.
Well, I, I am not agreeing with a unanimous vote on separation.
Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote.
Aldo Abas?
Aye.
Aldo Abas, aye. Alda Harrington McKinney?
Clarify what we're voting on, please.
Voting on whether you want to separate the items.
And an aye says separation?
An aye is.
An aye is for separation. A no is for.
Okay, aye.
Alda Skidmore? Muted?
Hold on, Alda Skidmore, I'm sorry. I don't see your hand, but.
Aye.
Alda Hennick?
Alda Hennick?
Alda Hennick is aye. Uh, Alda Bedar?
No.
Alda Bedar is a nay. Alda Kimball?
No.
Alda Kimball is no. So we have four ayes and two nays.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. So can we get a motion on item five, six, one, five, nine, three? Alda Kimball?
Move adoption.
You have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alda Hennick?
Yeah, I'm just going to read it. This is the one I'm, I'm guessing that Aldo Tureny was talking about before and I agree that on 5.19, uh, section three, the minimum qualifications of the monitor, I don't believe that it should extend to extended family or immediate family. I think the individual makes a lot of sense, um, but I don't think it should extend to family members. So I will not be supporting.
Okay, Alda Skidmore?
Thank you. I agree with Alda Hennick, uh, for the same reasons. I will not be supporting this and I will be voting no.
Okay, um. Alda Hennick, do you have more to say?
Yes, I actually had a, a question. Earlier it was stated that the, the board does not have investigative authority on its own, but in uh, section 520, uh, 10, in the relationship between the board and the Police and Fire Commission, the board's various duties give it the authority to review disciplinary decisions and processes, evaluate MPD, MPD standard operating procedures and conduct independent investigations. So I'm, I'm guessing that that, that is really meaning, um, requesting that the monitor conduct investigations, but I'm just trying to get a little bit of clarification on that and, and if there's a possibility that we could state that in there.
Rebecca, do you?
Thank you.
Sure. Could you say, uh, what section you're reading again? 5.20, what sub?
10.
So if you look at sub nine, the powers and duties, that spells out what their powers and duties are. And this is, uh, said their powers and duties are to appoint and supervise the independent monitor, evaluate the effectiveness of the monitor's office, conduct annual review of the chief of police, conduct community outreach, make policy recommendations, annual public report, and issue subpoenas. They, they do not do, uh, direct investigations of MPD. They, uh, supervise the independent monitor, who does that? Their subpoena power is for, um, holding public hearings, not for subpoenaing, uh, MPD. And, uh, so they do have the authority to, uh, conduct independent investigations, but that's independent investigations in the community, not for the MPD. It is not within sub nine their powers and duties to investigate MPD directly.
So I, I got a quick question, um, Alder Kimball, when you say they have subpoena power to conduct public, did you say? I'm trying to read it real fast.
Public hearings and compel testimony for public hearings.
So that is with the community? I'm trying to figure out who there's, who there, okay, never mind. Here comes Attorney Haas. That's, that's fine, Attorney Haas. I just wanted more clarification of the question that Alder Hennick had.
Sure, and, and I don't want to, you know, interrupt in the discussion amongst the committee, but I think the, when it says conduct independent investigations, it's in sub 10, if that means independent investigations in the community, that is giving them the, the board the authority to conduct independent investigations. First of all, it doesn't restrict it to, you know, in the community. And secondly, when it says the various duties give it the authority to review, that is giving it an additional power. The title of the, the section is not really relevant to, um, interpreting the, the language. So, uh, you know, I think if it's intended to be only independent investigations in the community, what, whatever that means, and not of officers or not of law enforcement, it would help, it would help our office to clarify that because we will be asked undoubtedly, does the board have the authority to conduct investigations? And if that's the intent, it would be helpful to have that in the ordinance.
So that would be a, a community complaint? And then the board would go out and investigate that? Is that what you're saying?
I honestly don't know at this point what the intent of that phrase is. I always understood it to be conduct independent investigations to the same extent the monitor could, complaints against officers. But based on the conversation at the PSRC meeting and tonight, I'm not sure that that was the intent of the work group. It wasn't explained that way. At least I don't remember it being explained that way at the work group stage.
Okay, Alda Kimball?
Attorney Haas, can you restate what you said about, um, the authority to review?
Well, sub 10.
Right?
The board's various door duties give it the authority to review disciplinary decisions and process, evaluate operating procedures and conduct independent investigations. And I don't think we can say it gives them the authority to conduct independent investigations in the community and, and not say that it, it is one of their duties and powers. That's not consistent.
Well, isn't issue, issuing subpoenas consistent with investigating?
Well, the, the provision about issuing subpoenas just says necessary to fulfill the duties of the board. So either, again, I, I'm not arguing for one thing or the other. I'm just arguing for clarity. And it, based on the discussion the other night and tonight, it does not appear that there's clarity about what the board's authority to conduct independent investigations mean. And, and this is when one of my priorities is to make sure that both the city and the public have consistent expectations. And I fear that if, if it states conduct independent investigations, people are going to read that as conduct independent investigations to the same degree that the monitor has that authority. And if that is not the intent, I think it should be stated.
So if we added, um, in sub 10, after independent investigations, necessary to fulfill the duties of the board, would that clear it up?
Well, not, not in my mind. What, what are?
The duties of the board are spelled out.
You know, you could take a, a, you know, the, the, the investig- the language regarding investigations for the monitor is, is more extensive and explanatory. I, I wouldn't know how to read that. Investigations are necessary to carry out their, their duties while the board can issue subpoenas. So can you conduct an investigation for the purpose of issuing a subpoena?
Or for the purpose of, uh, of community outreach or making policy recommendations or evaluating the effectiveness of the monitor's office or any other of the duties that are spelled out.
Well, if, if that is the interpretation of the body, then that would be helpful to know.
Well, I think that number 10 needs a little bit more work. It doesn't seem like there's consensus between our legal office and. It doesn't seem like there's consensus between our legal office and Alder Kimball.
I think it would be an improvement to say, you know, necessary to complete its duties, but I think that's still somewhat open to interpretation.
I don't know that we necessarily, I don't see us hashing it out right here right now at this point. I just brought it up for clarification for myself, and it sounds like there's some confusion.
Okay, so I think that needs a little work, so that's number 10. And Rebecca, can I, if I may as Chair, ask you why on subsection 5.19 that it's the same thing that Alder Tierney had issues with is going down to for the purpose of this ordinance, immediate family, individual spouse, designated family, blah, blah, blah? Why is that in there? I mean, it seems like it's going awful deep into someone's family. We could be missing someone who could actually be really good as an applicant.
We took this from the, I believe, from the Ethic Language and the Ethics. Correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Haas, but I think that's, we just adopted that language from the Ethics code, and the whole point about this is to have the Board and the monitor be completely independent, and there be no shadow of a doubt that there is bias in terms of pushing, in terms of not being independent from the police. And so we wanted to make it very, very clear that we do not want, on the Board, anyone who is or has been a police officer, or who has close relationship to a police officer, and for the monitor to not have been a police officer in this state for the last 10 years, or an MPD. But it doesn't prohibit the monitor from being, having police experience anywhere else in the world, really, or within Wisconsin if it was longer than 10 years ago. But the Board, we felt it, and the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Is the monitor? It says minimum qualifications of the monitor.
Right. Yeah, the monitor can be a police officer from another state, or from somewhere else in Wisconsin within the last 10 years.
Okay, I must be reading this wrong, because I thought it was also saying that.
The immediate family is only about MPD. They can't be an immediate family member of a current or former MPD employee.
Okay.
And it's just, it's self-explanatory. It boggles me.
Yeah, you don't have to, you know, I don't wanna cut you off, but you don't have to go any further. I get it. I just had a question, that's all. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions regarding number 5? I have one more question if no one else has a question. This is just for clarification, not putting you on the hot spot. But for the confirmation by the common counsel, are, is this, are they coming in, or is this again with just the Board has already selected that person? Oh, Attorney Haas, I'm sorry, you had your hand up?
Oh, I keep forgetting to lower it.
Oh, that's okay. So they're coming in with that person. The recommendation is coming in, not physically coming in, with that person for that appointment, correct? And that is from the Board, correct? It's still 5.1?
The monitor?
Yeah, I'm still on the monitor.
Yes.
5.19 for subsection B.
Yes. They're subject to counsel confirmation.
And so will the counsel be able to ask any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, like we do at any confirmation hearing. It's a public hearing.
And if the counsel rejects that applicant, does the Board have to go back to square one, or what? She was shaking her head, correct, Sheba? I mean Alder Bedar. Okay. And then. Those were my questions, I guess. Is the monitor gonna have the same title as? I think his name was, was his name Brian? Oh, I might be wrong on that. The executive's secretary? Okay.
The monitor will serve.
It's actually gonna be monitor, correct?
Right, and then they will serve as the secretary to the civilian oversight board.
And is there any consideration for having the monitor and his staff? I think Narco made a comment about it's nice to have that structure already set up instead of lagging behind. Was there any consideration of having the monitor and its staff set up first? Was that discussed? I think it was.
It was discussed extensively, and we decided since the Board is going to be supervising the monitor, the Board should hire the monitor, and then that the monitor should hire their staff, which there are three positions in this office. There's the monitor, an administrative support, and a data analyst, and then there is budget to hire independent investigators.
And when we talk about access to MPD records and you have unfettered access, can you expand on clarification on that?
That is just standard language that most monitors and auditors have, unfettered access to records. You can't do an audit if you don't have access to data.
Is that personnel records?
That would be.
Is that what we're looking at?
Well, any records, any records.
Okay, and so that monitor would be sharing that with the Board? And are we looking at PIP or HIPAA?
Yes, as the City Attorney's memo laid out, there are numerous other state laws and federal protections and employment laws that the Office of the Monitor and the civilian oversight board members will have to comply with.
Okay, and is the Board members going to be taking the training on HIPAA and PIP?
Yes, and on many other state laws as well, and federal laws.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I just wanted those clarifications. Go ahead, Alder Hennig.
Thank you. Yeah, one question I had was, I know you've probably spoke about it, but what was the discussion around the framework of training and any required trainings? Or did we, you know, we had talked about with NAICOL that they recommended a 40 hours of training or something like that, or an annual training process? And then did we talk at all about having the Board, after it stood up, go through that training before the hiring of the monitor?
Absolutely. All that training will happen before the hiring of the monitor. And we spelled out the training, including specifically the NAICOL training.
Were there, where were our, I mean, hourly requirements aren't in here, correct?
No, not yet. But again, we didn't want to be too prescriptive for the Board, since the Board is gonna be independent. We wanted to set up a general framework and with principles, with general principles for the Board to follow. And then the Board will be, you know, as Brian said, they'll set up their own rules. But we wanted in law, in the ordinance, to have the principles there, to have the, you know, things that we felt were really important coming from the ad hoc recommendation in there, but not to be too prescriptive for the details, because they, as they evolve together, will be figuring that out.
So as they evolve together, where will those kind of decisions be codified or written down as rules? So if they decide, we want this training every year, and we want this, and how they want that to work, where will that be housed?
They can adopt their own rules, as many of our Boards, Commissions, and Committees do. You know, the Plan Commission, their book of rules and standards is massive. Transportation Commission has a handbook, you know, many of our Boards, Commissions, and Committees do this on a regular basis, so it would be housed with them.
Gotcha. Some of them are then put into ordinance, correct?
They could, they might be, and that's what, you know.
That's what I was asking, whether it was in ordinance or in a workbook or a book of rules for that committee.
Yeah, they can adopt their own, like, rules, policies for how they operate.
Thank you.
And I said PIP, and I meant P-H-I. What are, when you said that the the Board can adopt their own ordinance, is that what you said? Okay, I misheard you. What did you say?
They can adopt their own rules and policies, much like other Boards, Commissions, and Committees do.
Okay. I heard ordinance from somewhere. There are no other questions? Go ahead, Alder McKenney.
Thank you. I would like to ask, since the the Board can set up their own operating structure, the importance of having an executive committee in place. Could you speak more around that and the, I think I heard the rationale, because the Board will be meeting every three months? And so is that a decision in terms of timeline that should have, could have been made within the body, rather than putting that in ordinance, that there's a three-member executive committee? Could someone speak to that, please?
I can. It could have been left to them, but as we were tasked with taking the concepts in the ad hoc recommendation and putting it into sort of operational structure in this ordinance, the question arose of what would the communication be like between the Board and the independent monitor's office as the Board is charged with overseeing the independent monitor's office between meetings? And so we decided to put in this structure as that communication and sort of administrative support function. Because that's how, again, many of our other Boards, Commissions, and Committees have executive committees that function in that way.
The reason that I ask the question is that the Chair of the original Ad-Hoc Committee said that that was not one of the parts of what the Board considered. It was put in, I guess, when you were conceptualizing, turning their concept into ordinance, so it came out of your three-member committee.
Yeah, there was a number of things that they, that the co-chair said it wasn't in their recommendation, but they purposely left the recommendation vague, and that they expected the counsel, as we implemented this, to make some of those more finer-grained decisions. And he said that during, you know, as we were working in the Alder Work Group, and multiple members of the Ad-Hoc Committee were there as we were discussing these items.
So is the Board going to be working with our HR department to set up interviews for the monitor? How does that work? And once they come to us, if they are not confirmed, they go back to square one?
That's correct. They'll be working with the city HR and other city departments as necessary to hire the person. And if their final selection is not confirmed, I would assume they would have multiple candidates to go back to and put forward an alternate candidate.
And so once the monitor is hired, how long do they have to set up their office if the Board is already working?
They have, as long as, you know, if they have the budget to do it, they can start immediately.
Okay. My only my only, and I don't know, no one else is in the queue, so I'll ask the question, is really firming up number 10. And so I don't know if you can work with Attorney Haas in that, but that would be my only concern on that. You've answered and clarified all my questions. Anybody else?
I would also be in favor of approval with the two, with the 5.19, the minimum qualifications recommendation, as well as the item 10 recommendation. I don't need a change at this point, but I would be fine with approval with connecting a recommendation to alter those for council presentation.
Will you be able to work, okay. Alder Kimball, Alder Bedar is?
Sorry, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask again Alder Hennig to repeat. I did get the last section, but what was the other one that you said you wanted clarification on?
And not clarification, but I would like to take out the direct relations of portion of 5.19, Section 3. The minimum qualifications of monitor.
So can I speak, Madam Chair? I'm back. So I am happy to work along Alder Kimball, the City Attorney, to clarify that print 10. But I remain strongly supportive of the language and the discussion that we have to separate any family relationship. Again, with MPD, that's the only family relationship that is talked about. The other one is just a separation from law enforcement for 10 years for the independent monitor, for the reasons that were already explained by Alder Kimball. And we had a very in-depth discussion, including going down the definitions of all family relationship for a while in our Alder Work Group. And I think that whether perception or reality, the independence of this monitor is absolutely a key to its is absolutely a key to the, to its working effectively and the trust. And I think it's, it was a long discussion that we had. So I am going to just say that I would not agree to take that familial relationship with MPD out of the language.
The only thing that I have with that is the fact that if, if your relative has not been with MPD for 10 years, I'm just going by what's above it, having that caveat in there, but you're saying if they've ever been, am I right?
And again, I just want to say this is immediate...
I think that's an issue.
It says immediate family, and it defines immediate family, it's not like... Your uncle twice removed.
Well, designated family, I understand individuals relative by marriage. You know, I mean, it does go deep. It's not on the surface with immediate family, it goes past that. I think that's an issue. Attorney Haas, where are you?
Yes?
There you are. So I, I know that NARCO made a comment about, of number three, that they thought it was, they never, I won't say they never heard of it, they should have heard of almost anything, but it wasn't common. Can you tell me, your, well, not your conversation, because from what I gathered, the Alders group had conversations with NARCO. So what is, is there a compromise there for number three? We've already said that number 10 has to be worked on or clarified or make it more clear and concise.
You're asking about the provision about the family, the immediate family members?
Yeah, because I think it goes deeper than just your immediate family, and everyone else is saying no. But to me, it looks like it goes deeper than just your brother, parent, siblings.
I mean, there, there are certainly options. I mean, there are different definitions of immediate family. I think in the statutes, it's basically parents, siblings, and children, which would be more narrow than this. So, you know, there, there is also, you know, the option of, as you or somebody else mentioned, the option maybe restricting it by time would be another, another option.
Is that, okay.
The ordinance, I mean, it talks about it at the time of appointment. So for all of these, for whether it's a monitor or board member, if they subsequently have a family member who is employed by MPD, that would not disqualify them.
Okay. Alder Hennig?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I even am perfectly happy with it, if it's a current MPD, you know, a family of a current MPD member, it's the retired or separated, so grandkids would be disqualified, things like that. But it's, I completely understand the current MPD, it's the retired one that, I can't combine.
I think that would be friendly. Is the authors willing to look at that? Okay. Rebecca's saying no. So you're willing to look at 10, but you're, oh, hold on, Alder Bedar, I just looked up and saw your hand was up.
I'm happy to look at the clarification of the language of 10, with what our intent was, but I, I mean, people want to make amendments, make amendments and vote on it or wait on the, I mean, I said that three hours ago, but we can, you can bring amendments to the council. I actually believe there is already a version two of this, and they just are with an amendment on it, so.
Oh.
I'm not sure that, you know, this is a time to try to make those...
Thank you. Thank you very much, Alder Bedar. Alder Hennig, are you willing to go with...
I don't think we're necessarily looking for, I wasn't looking for an amendment at that point. We had talked about negotiations, and I wanted to make sure that I was letting the authors know why I wasn't voting for it, so that if there were changes that wanted to be made, that they could be made. I'm, I'm not making an amendment at this point in time, that if I decide that that's what I do, I'll make that on the council floor, but...
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any confusion on the thoughts I was having.
Attorney Haas, I think that if I'm hearing, and Rebecca, I know you will correct me, if I'm hearing Alder Hennig, he moved a motion that he, to adopt with the caveat of clarification on number 10, am I correct?
Are you, I'm sorry, are you asking me?
Yeah, because no one else is helping me.
I thought the motion on the floor was to, to adopt. I'm not, I don't, not sure if I heard an amendment from Alder Hennig to that.
It was not an amendment. In a number of other committees, we've made a recommendation of approval with...
I'm sorry, recommendation of approval is what he said, yeah.
With, with items of, items of consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Does anyone object to having a unanimous vote recorded? Alder Skidmore?
I just want to clarify, is this on the amendment or on the main motion?
It's on a recommendation. Alder Hennig made a motion with a recommendation regarding item 10. That's on page 11, item 10. I believe he's requesting, go ahead, Alder Hennig.
Yes, my, my motion would be to recommend approval with the stipulation of considering 5.20, Section 10, clarification, as well as 5.19, Section 3 clarification, or not clarification, but rewording.
And I'm still trying to clarify that a yes vote would be in favor of approving the item 10 as amended, is that correct?
Item 5 with the recommendations.
There's no amendment.
With the recommendations, no amendment.
I'm still gonna... I'm sorry.
Attorney Haas, come save me.
I don't think I have to save you, but I think because you have a motion on the floor to approve, this would have to be treated basically as an amendment, to have a vote on Alder Hennig's recommendations, up or down on that, and then move to the main motion for approval.
Well, that's what I asked in the first place. If this is a vote on the amendment, which is what I'll call it, I'm not going to object to this vote.
If there was not a motion already on the floor, I think Alder Hennig's motion could be to approve with those changes, but I think because there was a motion on the floor, this has to be treated as an amendment to that motion.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so Attorney Haas, the first motion, it was moved in second, and that is just to approve it, correct?
To approve what Alder Hennig is proposing as far as the changes.
Okay, to approve it with the recommendations, the changes.
Only the changes.
The changes.
The changes. There's the changes, and then we'll vote on the underlying motion.
Okay. I'm not even gonna repeat that. Alder, Attorney Haas, you can repeat that for everyone.
Just so everybody's clear, the motion right now is to approve the two changes that Alder Hennig proposed, related to the immediate family member definition and the investigation authority of the board, I believe that's correct?
Great. So with that, if there's no objections... Yes, Alder Harrington McKenney?
No, I'm just registering that, I have, registering my objection, please.
Are you asking for a roll call vote?
I'm just expressing, I, you wanted it to be a unanimous vote, and it's not. So whatever the chair decides, it's not a unanimous vote. Please register me as a no.
All right. Okay. So I'm gonna be registering, Alder McKenney, as a no. Are there any...
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Alder Bedar, I think you, you're not muted.
I'm registering as a no.
Can we, can we just do a roll call?
Let's do a roll call.
Alder, Attorney Haas, can you repeat what we are voting on?
Sure. Right now, the vote is just on the amendment, Alder Hennig's proposal, that the main motion, the ordinance would include changes to the immediate family member provision and the provision related to the board's authority to investigate.
Thank you, Quazy. Can you call the roll? So a yes vote is for the amendments that Attorney Haas just mentioned, a no vote is not supporting those amendments.
Yep. Alder Boss?
You're muted.
Yes.
Alder Boss is a yes. Alder Harrington McKenney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKenney is a no. Aldis Skidmore?
No.
Aldis Skidmore is a no. Alder Hennig?
Yes.
Alder Hennig is a, Alder Bedar?
And this is on the, on the amendment, right?
Yes.
No.
Alder Bedar is a no. Alder Campbell?
No.
Alder Campbell is a no. We have four noes and two yeses, motion fails.
Okay. So now to the original motion, and that is to adopt item 5. Can we do a roll?
Yes. Alder Boss?
Aye.
Alder Boss is an aye. Alder Harrington McKenney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKenney is a no. Aldis Skidmore?
No.
Aldis Skidmore is a no. Alder Hennig?
No.
Alder Hennig is a no. Alder Bedar?
Aye.
Alder Bedar is an aye. Alder Campbell?
Aye.
Campbell is an aye. We have three ayes and three noes.
So that fails. Let's go on to number six. This is amending to add the position of independent monitor as a compensation group 21-level employee. Can we get, we have, oh!
Yes.
Yes. Attorney Haas, you should stay unmuted, because we're going to be using your knowledge tonight.
I, I wanted to, I, just to clarify, there was briefly in Legisard today, an alternate, I believe, that was taken down, so I just didn't want people to go searching for it because the author had not authorized us to post it yet, so that was our error. So I just didn't want people to be looking for it, I believe it's been taken down since then.
Okay, thank you. Alder Bedar, you, no, okay. Can I get a motion on item 6?
It's moved.
A second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can we have a discussion? I think we're discussion out. Okay. Are there any objections of me recording this as a unanimous vote? Aldis Skidmore?
Yes, I object. I want a roll call vote.
You want a roll call vote? Okay. So, just before we do the roll call vote for two seconds, Attorney Haas, can you explain what this is, just so everyone knows where we're at?
So this is, item 6, this is simply amending the ordinance to add the position of the independent police monitor as a compensation group 21-level employee. So it's just a simple amendment of the ordinance in which Comp Group 21 employees are listed.
Okay, thank you very much. Quazy, can you call the roll?
Yep. Alder Boss?
Aye.
Alder Boss is an aye. Alder Harrington McKenney?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKenney is an aye. Aldis Skidmore?
No.
Aldis Skidmore is no. Alder Hennig?
Aye.
Alder Hennig is an aye. Alder Bedar?
Can you unmute yourself, Alder Bedar?
Aye.
Alder Bedar is an aye. Alder Campbell?
Aye.
Alder Campbell is an aye. We have five ayes and one no.
Thank you. We're rocking and rolling, so to speak. The next item is number seven. Creating the office while amending the 2020... Creating the office while amending the 2020 operating budget. That's number seven, Legisard six oh six one seven. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and promptly seconded. Can we have a discussion? Does anyone have any questions? In the meantime, Attorney Haas, can you tell us what this is all about?
Sure, this is simply, well, this is to amend the operating budget for this year. So because the council previously approved a budget which included funding for the position of independent police officer, and now the proposal is to have that funding be used to set up the oversight board, there's an amendment to the budget is required. This includes funding for the position, that office, the two additional staff, I'm sorry, it does not include the funding for that. This includes the funding for setting up the civilian oversight board and funds related to that for this year. And I know Finance Director Shminicki is on the call as well. If there are questions about the details of the proposal, I'm sure he can answer them.
Aldis Skidmore? You had your hand up.
Forgot to take it down. Sorry.
Okay, Alder McKinney?
This is to Dave. So for item number seven, six zero six one seven, would you explain exactly what that will do? Because I'm reading it that it sets up the independent monitor, but it really is more than that. So would you go through the details in terms of what that means for the 2020 and as we go into 2021, and exactly what this covers?
Certainly, I can run through that for you. Basically, the resolution, as Attorney Haas described, allocates, if you recall, the adopted 2020 operating budget included $200,000 appropriated for a police auditor, and that was under the direct appropriations portion of the budget. This resolution would amend the operating budget to allocate that $200,000, some of which for the sort of the cost of the office as proposed, some of which for the oversight board support costs, and then some of it for legal representation. So basically takes that $200,000, allocates it for those three primary purposes. The resolution also spells out the amount of the stipends for board members, the additional stipend for members of the executive committee of the oversight board, and creates that office, creates the positions, and makes those allocations, as I said, and also states that city agencies will provide support to setting up the office as well as the board. And then the resolution then expresses that it's the intent of the council that there would be $482,000 appropriated in the 2021 adopted budget. Now, again, that has to be voted on separately when the budget, the 2021 budget is before you. But it's expressing the intent that that's the amount of sort of the full funding for the office and the board. So that's what the resolution would do as proposed and what's before you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, there's, oh. Go ahead, Alder Abass.
Yeah, I have one quick question is about the funding. So these are the funding we put in this ordinance just to keep the future vision, but in case if we need to expand funding or if we feel like after oversight, start functioning and as during initial presentation, when we were sitting there, we talked about body camera and additional training for the oversight body to learn about how to see and learn about those new techniques and technology. So I can see certain amount here, 29,600. So do we, if that happened that year, then we have to come back and do budget amendment, or how will we increase the budget or additional money? Where will the money come from? I just wanted to get a little understanding.
So Alder Abass, if you're talking about future years after 2020, either it would be incorporated into that year's budget that you would vote on as a council, or if that change were made in terms of various activities, let's say body cameras were approved, for example, or other changes to police procedures that would require additional training for board members, for example, then the budget could be amended to provide that funding. Now, that might come from, for example, the city's contingent reserve, or it might come from a new appropriation during the year. So there are, those would be a couple of the avenues to add funding to the office and to the board support costs, much like we do for any other program in the city that might see additional workload or have to respond to programmatic changes.
Thank you.
Dave, I have a question. So the 200, I'm out of order here, hold on. The 200,000, did you say was already allocated? And then what is, okay, I'll, have you answered that first?
So the adopted 2020 budget, so the budget that you adopted in November of 2019, included $200,000 for what was titled a police auditor. That's, it just says that would be the amount, and there would be follow-up legislation to address that, that program area. What this resolution would do would be to amend the 2020 adopted budget and allocate the $200,000 to the purposes I described before. That would be the cost of the office, the cost of training the board and setting up funding for the stipends, as well as setting up an appropriation or an allocation for the legal representation element of the ordinances that you looked at today.
Okay, and so going forward into the budget for 2022.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry. Going forward into that budget, what would the anticipated increase be? Because by then, we would have the monitor and at least one staff, correct?
Right, so there's $200,000 in the 2020 budget. This resolution allocates it. The annualized cost of what's proposed by the work group and included in the resolution is 400, the cost of that's $482,000. So in order to accomplish that, the 2021 budget would have to increase the funding from $200,000 to $482,000.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Attorney, I mean attorney, Attorney Abass, Alder Abass?
Thanks. One big question about childcare for board members during the board meeting. I can see $1,800. Is it more like a reimbursement? Like, say, if I have a nanny at home or find a nanny and the meetings are in the evening, would I have to submit invoice? Or what will be the process? Is there any gap? How much, how much a one person can get for three, four-hour-long meeting? And did we set some amount? Because that can go really fast, that money out.
So Alder Abass, this is actually, this is based on the process used in the TFOGS meetings as well as Imagine Madison, and this is to provide childcare at meetings. So it pays for childcare staff, professionals, to provide that service at meetings. It's not a reimbursement to board members or anything like that. If that's what is envisioned in the future, then additional funding might have to be provided for that. So this assumes $75 per meeting on the cost of that on an annual basis, and it's assumed that the board would meet twice a month, so 24 meetings a year. So this is based on that model.
So my other question is, because I have kids and they go to childcare and daycare, so what we are suggesting here is we will have a daycare provider at the common council building, county building.
Wherever the meetings are held, yeah.
Yes, wherever. So like Warner Park have a childcare facility. Did you check the state law about childcare facility and providing, what are the laws around it? Because there are certain laws where you, so.
No, we did not. This is simply based on what was done for Imagine Madison and for TFOGS.
I will also suggest we should also look, because it might be under the state law, that person, childcare provider, might be not legally possible to provide childcare in a facility which is not designed for childcare. I'm just throwing some thoughts here. Warner Park is definitely designated spot with a room, with the safety, with twice in person, and you have a signed up sheet. It's all system set, and there's a license attached to that. So I will also suggest look into that, and also look into that if somebody have a nanny, we can also provide flexibility. So then the person have kids, they can stay with the nanny and person can come and ask for reimbursement. I'm just thinking through this, might be this, in future, might we have to sort this out more? I might need more money than $1,800 childcare. Yeah, okay, just saying that.
Right, so it looks like this office is getting more and more expensive. Dave, can you ask, can you tell me what all the components are in the budget? I know that there was a talk about a data analyst, and can other departments actually provide that service?
So the office includes three positions. One is the monitor itself. The second is a program assistant that would be the office administrator and complaint intake. And the third is envisioned as a data analyst that would analyze MPT data and develop reports. On your question regarding the data analyst, there is a data team. It's in the finance department. It does have a work plans, things that are focused on performance measures around moving towards outcome budgeting, racial equity and social justice, data analysis. There would probably be some very limited capacity to support independent monitor data requests, probably less than a position. There's three positions on the team. So that would, so yes, there's probably some limited capacity to support some of the efforts of this office.
Okay.
So.
And what, and maybe you can't answer this, maybe Alder Campbell can answer this. Are we looking at all three positions doing intake? Or just the administrative?
We're looking at the independent monitor, whoever is hired deciding what the workflows are.
Alder Harrington McKinney? No, okay, I will, I will lower your hand then. Are there any other questions regarding this? If there's not, doesn't look like it, are there any objections to me recording a unanimous? That's all you have to say sometimes. Alder Hennig?
Sure, I was going to reiterate my prior statement that I will not be able to support this one because of the stipend aspect. However, I do appreciate Alder Abass's comments and how to address COVID also, or to address childcare in the time of COVID, and how we support people being able to attend virtual meetings. I didn't see a line item. I'm sure it was talked about, but that's something that I would definitely support making possible.
Okay. Aldis Skidmore? You can unmute yourself.
Did you ask if there was objection to a unanimous vote?
To be honest, I can't remember.
Yes, you did.
Thank you. I did ask. Are you objecting?
Yes, and I want a roll call vote.
Okay. Attorney Haas, can you tell us what we're voting on, what the a's are for and what the no's are for?
An aye vote would be to amend the 2020 operating budget to create the office, to take the originally approved funding that was set aside for the monitor position and to provide funds to create the civilian oversight board.
Okay, Quazy, if you don't mind, will you do the roll?
All right. Alder Abass?
Yes.
Alder Abass is an aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Unmute yourself, Alder McKinney.
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney is a no. Aldis Skidmore?
No.
Aldis Skidmore is a no. Alder Hennig?
No.
Alder Hennig is a no. Alder Bedar?
Yes.
Alder Bedar is a yes. Alder Campbell?
Aye.
Alder Campbell is an aye. We have three ayes and three nos.
Okay, it fails. Can I get a motion? First of all, before we get a motion to adjourn, I really want to say that I appreciate all the work that everyone does. You know, a lot of people think that we don't work hard. A lot of people think only a few people work hard, but the bottom line is that all 20 of us work hard to represent this city. But more importantly, I want to thank everyone who took out a Friday night, which you know is not a popular night to have a meeting, but took out a Friday night to be with us tonight to go over these three items, and I really appreciate it. And I will, oh, Aldis Skidmore? I guess I talked too long. Did you have something to say?
Other than the fact that I forgot to take my hand down?
Oh, okay. I was just gonna say I really do appreciate everyone coming out on this Friday night and staying until almost 10:30. I, we won't have another meeting on Friday, I hope, but I really do appreciate it. And thank you, Alder Bedar and Alder Campbell for your work on this. and Alda Campbell for your work on this. And I'm glad that we had it all in one night. Because if we would have had it at the meeting before the council, that we wouldn't have got done. With that said, I know I've talked too long, Alda Abbas?
I, I just want to, just quick follow up to your thanks. I also want to really thank Alda Campbell and Alda Bedar and also Donna Moreland. I attended a couple of meetings and I saw how much effort it takes and how much work they spend. So really appreciate them and also thanks to all the city staff who really worked very hard getting us so far. So thanks all and happy Friday slash Saturday morning.
Okay. Can I get a sec, did you do a motion, Alda Bedar, I mean Abbas?
Yeah, Alda Hennig is waiting for that motion, so yes.
Alda Hennig?
Either first or seconding adjournment, either one.
Motion to adjourn.
Alda Hennig?
Second.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And I want to thank our technician, Paul, for hanging in there. I appreciate it. You can talk about us in the morning. And Attorney Haas, thank you for keeping us on track. I know it was like herding cats, but I still appreciate it. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Aye.